Mike O'Neill.
This is yours.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica to order for December 10th, 2018. Before we have the roll call, I have some sad news to report. Gary Stoffen passed away last week. He worked for the city for 31 years in the fire department, ending as fire chief. He was a good-humored man, and after he retired, he avoided the political scene, which probably contributed to his good humor. Condolences to his wife Gloria and their two sons. And there will be a service tomorrow at the chapel by the sea at 2 o'clock. May he rest in peace. Pardon me?
We will adjourn in honor.
Yes. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Here.
Councilmember DeGree?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vatterlaus?
Here.
Mayor Keener?
Here. Okay, now we'll have the salute to the flag led by Councilmember O'Neill.
I pledge the Union and its citizens with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the danger of DUI in honor of Maya Thon. And I'll just read this. Recognizing the tragic loss of Maya Thon and other young lives due to driving under the influence, whereas our community recognizes the negative impact on our citizens and danger of driving under the influences of substances such as alcohol, medication, and drugs, and whereas Pacifica has experienced the tragic loss of young life at the hands of DUI drivers, and whereas Maya Thon, a longtime resident of Pacifica, was a passenger in a DUI-related collision approximately one year ago on the 26th of December 2017, and tragically lost her life at the young age of 20 years old. And whereas December 26, 2018, the one-year anniversary of Maya Thon's untimely death will be a difficult and emotional date for Maya's family and friends, and whereas Maya is remembered as possessing a special kind of goodness that was infectious and touched the lives of so many people simply by being herself. She was the sole recipient of Dugan's Kindness Award twice, once while in eighth grade at Our Lady of Perpetual Help School, and again at high school graduation from Mercy High School in Birmingham. She was in her junior year at Dominican University and San Rafael as a nursing student wishing to follow in the footsteps of her mother Eileen. And whereas Pacifica held a very dear place in Maya's heart, and she expressed the wish to live in Pacifica forever and raise a family here. And whereas a similar DUI collision in Pacifica on February 4th, 2005, took the lives of Pacificans, 19-year-old Jonathan Beer and 16-year-old Stephanie Achevery. And whereas the promise of young lives along the path of bright and hopeful futures has been unnecessarily extinguished by the unavoidable choice, by the avoidable choice, to drive under the influence. And whereas the loss of these lives leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow, and whereas we ask each citizen to make a conscious effort to intervene when somebody you know attempts to get behind the wheel after drinking or taking drugs. And whereas the Pacifica Police Department works with local community groups and seeks funding through the California Office of Traffic Safety to combat DUI. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica hereby extends heartfelt condolences to the family of Maya Thon and all families whose lives have been cut short at the hands of DUI drivers, and urges our citizens to become aware of the nature of the problem of DUI driving and become a part of the solution to prevent DUI fatalities. Done this 10th day of December 2018. Signed by John Keener. Would you like to, first of all, receive the proclamation, and secondly, have a photograph taken? Okay. Next is the consent calendar. And I have comments on a couple of these. I don't know if anybody else on council wants to pull them. Yes, Deirdre Martin?
Yes, I would like to make a comment on item three and item five.
Okay. You're up.
Make it now?
Yeah.
Okay, so item three is the approval of street sweeping services agreement between City Pacifica and Contract Sweeping Services. I would like to reiterate my desire for us to try to work out a better time for street sweeping when people are at work. Maybe the hours could be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I noticed that on my own street, they come before 7:00 a.m., and there's no room for street sweeping on Terranova Boulevard at that time. So I think a few of us have said that before. And then on item five, I just wanted, actually, City Manager, to just give a brief statement on why we, it's a resolution of the City Council to, of the City of Pacifica, to declare a shelter crisis. So I was just going to ask if you could explain to the public why.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keener and Councilmembers, and Councilmember Martin. If I leave out any details, Police Chief Stidle can fill those in, but the short version of it is that with new funding that will become available through the state budget to local cities regarding homelessness, this resolution is a statement of need that opens up the door to access those funds.
That's great. So I just wanted to make sure the public heard that, that this, the reason we're declaring this shelter crisis is to be able to apply for grant funding for certain programs. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Sue DeGree?
So item three regarding the street sweeper, so for the public, because we're outsourcing, city staff can't be everywhere, so if you see any issues, please do contact the city right away. Thank you.
Okay, and I also had a comment, but it is covered by Deirdre on items three and five. I have a comment on item six, the mitigation fees. And so I would just comment, first of all, that this year, the mitigation fees that are collected by the city are accounted for in the expenditures. However, the past years are not, and so we don't know what the balance of mitigation fees is as opposed to the other revenues that come into these funds as well. And I'll just leave it at that. Any other comments? No? Can I have a motion to?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as is?
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, please vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, now we come to oral communications. Let's see, we'll start with Mark Steckbart, Laura Finucci, followed by Laura Finucci, followed by Jeff Gueye.
Thank you. For the record, I'd like to read the certification of election for the November 6th election, since there seems to be some confusion about who should be up in those seats tonight. This is a letter dated December 6th, last Thursday, to Sarah Coffey, Chief, or City Clerk. Advise you have completed the official canvada of vote and certify the results attached. Pleasure working for you, Marvin Church, Chief Election Officer, San Mateo County. Our Marvin Church hereby certify, election was held, three, four-year terms, further certified, the votes cast are attached as exhibit A. And here are the certificates of election. Sue Beckmeyer, elected December 6th, Mary Beer, December 6th, or November 6th, and Mike O'Neill. So I will now pass this off to Sue DeGree, since she's pro tem, and the mayor shouldn't be up there. And I will leave the rest of my time to John Keener and Sue DeGree to explain to the public why they're up there acting like they should be voting when Mary Beer and Sue Beckmeyer are, or Sue Beckmeyer are not.
Okay, Laura Finucci, followed by Jeff Gueye and Roy Stotts.
My time's not up. I'd like to keep talking.
Oh, I thought you were done.
I'm not.
Okay.
It's your turn.
I'm not talking, you're talking.
Okay.
Laura Finucci, followed by Jeff Gueye, followed by Roy Stotts.
Good evening, Mayor Keener, members of the council and city staff. I'm Laura Finucci from Hip Housing. Tonight, here to present you with Hip Housing's 2019 calendar, which you should have in front of you. This is an annual calendar contest that we have through kids, kindergarten through fifth grade in San Mateo County, to draw a picture of their home, and then to write a statement about what their home means to them. The cover winner is a first grader whose last name is actually "Home," and she was our calendar winner. We honored the calendar winners at a celebration last, last week. I'll go to the month of September, that was the month I was born, and our fifth grader winner writes, "Home is not a place. Home is not the walls around you. It is the sharing, caring, and loving feeling passed from all the people in the house. Home is the warm feeling inside of you." We're very thankful for the Pacifica residents who have opened up their home, especially for our home-sharing program to provide housing for people in need. And when I look at our statistics, we have usually about 700 people a year who participate in our matched in our home-sharing program. And right now, next to San Mateo, Redwood City, South San Francisco, the highest number of matches that we have are actually here in Pacifica, which I think is really tremendous, being that it's a smaller community than some of those larger communities. So the residents here really do make use of that program. We use the calendar to educate the community about our affordable housing programs, including the home-sharing program, our self-sufficiency program for families with children, and through the over nearly 400 properties that we own and manage in San Mateo County. So we're very thankful for your support, and we hope you enjoy these calendars through the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Jeff Gueye, followed by Roy Stotts, followed by Rick Nahas.
Good evening. I'd like to state that this meeting is out of order. According to the election code of section 10263B, it provides for a consolidated election, the governing body shall meet at its usual meeting no later than the next regularly scheduled city council meeting following the presentation of the 28-day canvas of returns, or at a special meeting called for this purpose to declare the results and to install the newly elected officers. That should be this meeting, just like the other 13 cities that had elections in November 6th. They are installing their council members on the next meeting, or already have installed their next members. This meeting should not have any other purpose than to install the next city council members. Now, I understand that the city attorney has determined that a special meeting called for this purpose serves as having the city council installed on the next regularly scheduled meeting. That's not a special meeting, that's a next regular scheduled meeting. And by those terms, if we were to allow her to dictate when that could be, it could be June 2020. The new council should be installed now. You should step down, those of you who were not elected, and we should get on with regular business after that.
Thank you, Jeff. Roy Stotts, followed by Rick Nahas, followed by Frank Vella.
I'm Roy Stotts, 42-year resident of Pacifica, currently live in Park Pacifica. I actually want to sort of lighten things up, and, because we have an anniversary we're celebrating tonight. Exactly four years ago tonight, Mayor Keener was installed as a new council member, just the way that two other council members should have been installed tonight. The divisiveness and the hypocrisy of the majority of this council is beyond measure, and I cannot wait until the new people take office, and we actually can go in a positive direction. If you look at that installation for Mayor, for Councilman Keener at the time, there was a lot of, in fact, Mike O'Neill was there, there were a lot of people that were welcoming him in, congratulating on his, on his victory, and well-deserved. But at this point, I would like to basically say that it's a four-year anniversary, and it'll be your first, and luckily, it'll be your last.
Rick Nahas, followed by Frank Vella.
Hi, I'm Rick Nahas. I live in Sharp Park. This past October 3rd, two people in the SAM Trans Planning Department presented a plan for a micro-transit pilot, an on-demand shuttle service, kind of like Lyft and Uber, in Lindemar. It was a one-year experiment starting in March 2019 to be built on top of the existing Flex shuttle bus service. And Flex is a service that runs in Lindemar for people who don't have cars to get from place to place. I was skeptical when I heard it. After the presentation, Karen Matsumoto, the mayor pro temp of South San Francisco, stood up and said, "If Pacifica doesn't want it, we want it, and we will support it." And certainly, they will support it with their biotech companies. I was a little skep, I was a little surprised and angry when I heard this, but then I thought, you know, I had gone to all the SAM Trans meetings, and I had voiced my opinion, but really, all I did was complain, really not support it. So I want to publicly thank Karen Matsumoto, the mayor pro temp of South San Francisco, for reminding me that it's not what I say, it's what I do. And I think that we can all be reminded of this, that we should be doing something about this, we should be supporting those two people who had the plan and the foresight to say, "Let's try this in Pacifica." Whether it fails or passes, whether we agree or don't agree with what they do, we should support them. Minimally, we'll learn something, or maximally, maybe it'll be extended to Rockaway Beach, or to Montero, or somewhere else. Thanks.
Thank you. Frank Vella.
Good evening. Frank Vella, Lindemar. Not on our agenda tonight for the city council is swearing in of our elected board members. The delay in this is unjust, unreasonable, and a very undemocratic process. The majority of this council claims as listening to the requests of the public, yet only a few seem to be actually heard by the majority of council. An election is not just voices, but actual numbers of our city's own rightful vote. On November 6th, 2018, the City Pacifica voted in a new city council. They should be immediately sworn into office as required to be by law. At the last council meeting, there was talk of democracy by this council majority. Not swearing in the new council is another example of this council's actions on democracy. Another example of democracy at its worst by this council also is regarding Marianne Nyharts running for council. Did members of this council majority act in a democratic manner then also? Absolutely not. The new council should be sworn immediately, as voted on by the citizens of Pacifica.
Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have for oral communications.
Hand up.
Do we have another speaker card? Linda Martin.
Hi, my name is Linda Martin. I'm a longtime resident here, about 40 years. And I'm just coming to speak on a different subject, just briefly. I know that Sue DeGree has worked on this, but the airplane noise is getting much, much worse in Fairmont, where I live. It's been bad. About three years ago, when they changed the pattern, it got much worse. And just recently, I mean, in my house, it's really hard to work inside, and I have, like, double-proof windows. The airplanes come by, today it was like every three or four minutes, very loud ones. They're flying lower and lower. I actually went and got one of those buttons, you can now file a complaint, and you can see the elevation. It's getting lower and lower. So I'm just putting that out for the city council. I hope you guys can address that in the future, because it's really affecting the quality of life out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, that's all the speaker cards I have. So for orals, onto council communications. Have any volunteers? Sue?
Regarding the airport, yes, it's been a painful long time. So a couple encouraging things, and I don't want to overstate the encouragement, because encouragement would be that we would have a solution in the next three months. I don't see that happening. However, there have been minutia movement, and one of them was the election of November. So that with a different majority in the legislature and the federal government, there is some hope that maybe something could be moved. Because remember, nothing can happen, the FAA is not going to do anything dramatic unless Congress mandates it. So right now, the only mandates are safety and efficiencies. The negative health impacts of noise are not in a mandate. The pressure from all of us, certainly the city of Pacifica residents and the council, and the Bay Area, as well as numerous more areas, there's more growing, what do we call it, roundtables happening, that the negative health impacts are becoming more and more heard, and so there is hope that they will finally be part of a mandate. So part of what the roundtables are doing, and there are more now roundtables than there used to be, they are talking to each other. Our San Francisco Roundtable, we also became part of NOISE, which means that that is a lobbying group in DC, and we've already participated in part of that lobbying. So we have our name of Pacifica in that lobbying effort. You have, there is the local airport, so the Roundtable and the public pressure against aircraft noise is actually more than just the FAA. So the FAA is one component, airlines are another component, and airports are the third component. And so the public pressure needs to be on all three, in my opinion. So there is, what the Airport Commissioner here, I would say, has shown, he's demonstrated, because he has actually challenged, use those words, challenged the FAA to look at this and listen about health. He has also provided second chance for those of you who have been in the area where you get the insulation, and it's now over 20 years old, there's a second chance, so you can apply, you go online for that. If anybody tells you that you can't, call them up, because he has said it to me personally, and he has said it in public at the SFO Roundtable, including last week. So, you know, let me know if you have any problems with, because it's, when you do things electronically, sometimes you can't make any comments, it just kicks you out. The other, now the new areas of Pacifica, which is down the spine, we didn't have that before, we always had it in the north, and yes, it is worse. Down the spine, you can also apply. Are you going to get it? At least the man has said, "Apply," and I think you should. The other thing that at one time, we were asked not to keep pinging every time you hear that airplane, because they get the point, they know there's an issue. Now we're changing back to, if you have the stamina to push a button, or to call, or whatever, do it. And get your friends who sympathize with you to do it. So there is progress, but it's all depending really on public pressure. It really is public pressure. So I'm very sorry that some people actually do get sick, and we're trying to make, we have made that clear, that it's not an annoyance, it's causing illnesses. Nothing that can ever...
Thank you, Sue. Sue Vidalas.
I attended the county, Countywide Water Committee, and there's a new committee called the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Agency, which is a long name, but it comes from something that Jackie Speer said, and I'm going to read it. "The sea is rising, we are not prepared. It's time for us to pull together across city boundaries to help our citizens in the battle against rising waters and the rising costs of coping with this global threat. To do that, San Mateo County cities must create a joint agency, along with the county, to ask for federal help, and that's what we're doing." This committee is, I know I bring it up every time I go, but it's to get federal grants. One city has a really hard time getting a federal grant for as large a project as we need, but if the cities can work together, then hopefully, we can get the grants for some of the things we actually need. I also attended the tree lighting at the community center, the Pacifica Tree Lighting, and the tree lighting in Rockaway, and I'd like to thank the city of Pacifica, they had a booth there to help us with cost. Sorry, we, instead of a permit, the city had a booth there, and we'd like to thank them for participating in the tree lighting also. It was very well attended. It gets bigger every year. We almost have outgrown our space, it's so big. And people have a great time, and it's fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Deirdre Martin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to the Parks, Beaches, and Rec for the holiday tree lighting at the Pacifica Community Center, which is always a fun event, and then the Elf Market, and gingerbread making, and me and my kids always enjoy that zone, shout out to the Parks and Rec, thanks.
Mike O'Neil.
I was also at the Rockaway Tree Lighting, and I think a good time was had by all, had lots and lots of kids. Thanks to the Pacifica Police and the Fire Department for their support down there for the crowds, they estimated there must have been about 2,500 to 3,000 people there. I think there was at least 150 kids, 200 kids, so. So that was the tree lighting at Rockaway. Unfortunately, I missed the one for PBNR, I couldn't make it, but Sue DeGree and I were at the Three Ribbon Cuttings on Saturday at the Sanchez Adobe, excuse me, the Sanchez Arts Center, the Oceana in front of Mizetti's and Ace Hardware, the Oceana Murial Project, and also the dedication of Paul Meadows' plantings on the different street corners there. And so there was three in a row, and Sue and I were there for all three, so thank you.
So on to staff communications, and I think we have a special communication from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just address some of the comments that have been made regarding, number one, the terms of the current council members, and then also to address the issue of when the city is authorized and required to certify the results of the November 6th election. With regard to the terms of the existing council members and mayor, those terms extend until the city actually certifies the results of the returns, and then installs the new council members. So I want to make clear that council members sitting on the day as tonight are clearly authorized to serve as, and are still, council members. With regard to when the city is going to be certifying the results, the agenda for this meeting tonight was posted on December 5th, as is required under action taken by the city council to require posting of the agendas the Wednesday before the regular meeting. That was done on December 5th. The county didn't send their canvassing of the election returns until December 6th. The agenda had already been posted. The state law, which was mentioned tonight, does allow for not only certification at the next regularly scheduled meeting, but at a special meeting called for that purpose. That is the process that the city is going to be using to certify the election results and install the new council members, that will be done on December 17th.
Thank you. And if I may, just one question. In the past, we have always had a special meeting following the first meeting in December for installing the new council members, isn't that correct?
That is my understanding, and actually, you know, I'm a city attorney for five cities, and that's generally the practice that's followed by a number of my jurisdictions, which is to call a special meeting to certify the election results and install the new council members at that special meeting.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Keener. No special reports from the city manager.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have a public hearing, and this is an ordinance providing for district elections in the city of Pacifica, and including establishing a map of the districts and the election order of the districts. So could I have a staff report on this, please?
This is City Clerk Sarah Coffey. I'll be presenting the staff report for this item. On August 20th, the city received a challenge under the California Voting Rights Act to, and the city initiated looking into the process of transitioning from at-large elections of council members to elections by district for council members. On September 24th, 2018, the city council adopted Resolution Number 44-2018, initiating the process to transition from an at-large election system to a by-district election system for city council members. The election code states that the city is required to hold at least five public hearings before adopting an ordinance identifying the districts and sequencing of the district-based election system. Public hearings were held on October 8th, 2018, and October 22nd, 2018, to provide background on the districting process. And then again, public hearings were held on November 17th and November 29th to review the district, proposed district maps. In the October meetings, the city council identified criteria and communities of interest to use for the districting process. There are some traditional districting principles that were adhered to, that the boundaries must be contiguous and in a compact form, and then the district shall respect communities of interest, that the city could define. The city council district would respect previous choices of voters by avoiding creation of contest between council members as well. And the city council confirmed those principles. Each district should be in a relative equal proportion of populations, and the council in those October meetings confirmed the following considerations as priorities. The Asian-American population in the north would be the, would be the minority population, would be the majority of population in the northeast portion of Pacifica that is identified as District 1 in the maps. Each district, they'd like to include Highway 1 and the coast if possible, also respect the voter's choice and continuity of office for council members, and then consider neighborhoods as identified in the general plan and natural geography. So during the meetings, the public hearings and meetings in November, on November 17th and November 29th, proposed draft maps were published seven days before each of those hearings, and those maps were considered at those meetings. The council did significant work in reviewing those maps, taking in public comment and consideration for defining neighborhoods and districts, and those culminated in the map that's being presented today as proposed with this ordinance. Some of the comments that were received by the council during the draft map considerations were from Valamar residents to keep the Valamar neighborhood together in a single district if possible, and then also from the Fairmont Subdivision Improvement Association to keep their constituents in a single district if possible. And the council considered those inputs and worked with the maps to incorporate those changes. And the proposed map 505B that's being presented with this ordinance is a culmination of the input and the council's considerations. The legal requirements for the districts is that each council district, as I mentioned, should contain nearly equal population, and drawn in a manner that complies with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So looking at packet page 105, contains the map 505B that's being presented and suggested for selection with the introduction of this ordinance for district-based elections. In this map 505B, the proposed election sequence would have Districts 1 and Districts 4 up for election in 2020, and then Districts 2, 3, and 5 up for election in year 2022. I'd also like to note a correction to the proposed ordinance in which there is a reference to a letter from Alan Schenckman alleging the city's at-large election system violated the California Voting Rights Act. That reference should be to Kevin Schenckman instead of Alan Schenckman. So we'll make that correction moving forward with the ordinance. That concludes the staff report. If you have any questions or comments, let me know.
Okay, I have one speaker card, it's Linda Martin.
Hello, well, as you know, I'm a longtime resident, but I actually didn't hear about the details of this until I read an article in the Tribune this last week. So I immediately tried to look up the information to find what was going on, and I understood that through the great mountain, that Fairmont was getting kind of split up, and I'm from Fairmont, so I really wanted us to all be together and have one, you know, one person on council. I'm also very concerned about the airport noise, as you know, and that's a big thing when I walk around with my neighbors, it's one of the hot topics that we talk about as we walk around the Little Mile Track back in, everybody has complaints, everyone's kind of concerned about it. So when I looked at the way these things were drawn up, and I guess you're doing a new one, 505B you're voting on, which is supposed to make more of the communities stay with their different groups, but I think as to the Fairmont, it does a big disservice. That when I looked at it, the one, the other new one, which is the FSIA one, actually keeps more of us together, because under 505B, I'm kicked out of Fairmont. Now, I know Fairmont has a lot more blacks and minorities, and less educated, more renters, but it's also my area. And I think it's important to have people who are, I mean, have whites, blacks, mixed, and homeowners. I'm on Fairmont, Fair Lawn, which is more affluent, but we're part of Fairmont, we're part of the area that has lobby same concerns. I've lived there for years, and so the way that if you're going to pass the 505B, you actually split. I mean, literally, Fair Lawn is going to be on, go over to Manor, well, I used to live in Manor, but I haven't lived in Manor for 40 years. I know what the Manor District is, everybody where we are calls ourselves part of Fairmont. So, and you're actually literally splitting it between my street and Beachview. Both of those are on the hills, both of the same community, same neighbors, a lot of the same issues. So I would urge you to please reconsider FSIA, which is actually also sponsored by the Fairmont Improvement Association, is much better at keeping more of us all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And that's all the speaker cards I have for the, for this item. And seeing no more speakers, I'll close the public hearing. So in response... So, in response to the, to the questions or the comments from the last speaker. At the last meeting, we went through the, the FSIB proposal, and we incorporated as much of it as we possibly could into what is now 505B. The constraints that FSIB didn't acknowledge were that District One has to be one of those that has elections first, because it has the minority population of Asian-Americans. And the way that we saw to make sure that it has elections first is to incorporate a sitting city council member into that district. And so that explains why there's a little bit more to the south around, around Heathcliff and Lori Lane, and why we cannot, you know, believe me, we tried to incorporate more of Beachview and, and so on, and we just couldn't. We got as much as we could. So, I'm sorry, that's, that's, that's the best we could do. Do I have any other comments from council? Yes?
Yeah.
Deirdre Martin.
I was just going to see if we could pull up FSIB. This is, so what Linda Martin was referring to was a map that was submitted, and it's called, is it called FSIB?
FSIA.
FSIA, I'm sorry. FSIA, yeah.
The one that Fairmont Subdivision Improvement Association submitted. Okay. So, okay, I'm looking at the hand-drawn one, sorry. So Linda, this, this one was one that we studied pretty extensively and took comment about it, so I'm sorry that, that you just heard about it last week, but, but we did go through it, and we tried our best to keep neighborhoods together and consistency throughout, and we went down to the census block. And that actually leads me to another comment that we received via email, which was the, another one that we had a tough time with, Escolero in Lower Lindemar, where, where we, where it was sort of a dead end, and we, we actually, was the end of a census block. And we do have Chalise here tonight that, that may be able to just kind of make a comment on that, too. Chalise is with the, the topography group that, can, is that okay if we ask Chalise to make a comment?
Yep.
On, on that, the Escolero area and the census block that we had a tough time with.
Happy to. In both instances, we have the constraint of that we must abide by the census block lines. So, to address the first speaker, in that area along Fair Lawn, those census blocks are, one of them is rather large. And so when we tried to look at incorporating that, it would throw the balance off to that District One if we included Councilmember Batterslaw in that, in that, in that district. So it was not possible for, we included as much as we could and still maintained, the federal law requires, requires this, that we are population balanced, so we can have no more or greater deviation of 10% between the greatest populated area and the least populated. We have a similar situation down at Escol- what is it?
Escolero.
Escolera, yeah. After we received that comment from, in the email, I checked to see what it would do if we added those, if we did not divide, use, I'm sorry, Es-
Escolera.
Escolera as a divider, and we would exceed our 10% if we captured both sides of that street, at least for those top portions where those dead ends are. And so it's just, it's, it's, it's difficult because of the way the census blocks are drawn, and what's depicted on the screen now are the census block lines. I know it's hard to read what those numbers are, but those numbers show what the population is in each of those, and some of the census blocks are rather large. So we're working within those constraints and trying to keep neighborhoods together. On the positive, sometimes, and I will just throw this out there, sometimes people who live on a major street actually like having one side of the street represented by one council member and another side by another council member. They feel like they have two people that they can go to when there are traffic issues or issues related to that street. So it, there, it's a, there could be some positives that come from actually multiple representation in a different, in an area.
Thanks, Chalise. So, then, then the only other thing I'll say is that I, I'm in the same situation because I have a kinship with my neighbors across the street, but we're, we're going to be in different districts as well. So I do see a positive to that, because I'm trying to take the positive out of everything these days, so I'll go with it, and thanks, Chalise.
Thank you. Mike O'Neil.
I was going to basically kind of say the same thing to, to Ms. Martin, is that in specifics for Fairmont, we spent over an hour figuring, hour, hour and a half figuring the geography and the boundaries of Fairmont, trying to get it to where it would work within the guidelines. And unfortunately, the guidelines weren't cooperative, so I just wanted to apologize for that. And this is our fourth meeting, so if we don't have a lot of questions, it's kind of we've asked them before. It's our fourth meeting on this, I think, isn't it? Yeah.
Fifth, I think, isn't it? Yeah. No, no. I don't think, I don't think we'll open up the, the public hearing. Sue Vaterlos.
Again, we tried our best in some of the earlier maps. Fairway Park was split, Rockway was split, Valamar was split, so we had to consider that we have a lot of neighborhoods in Pacifica, and we tried to keep them together as much as possible. And like everybody else said, it really wasn't possible to keep all of Fairmont together because Fairmont has too many people in their actual neighborhood, and like she said, the census, we have to go by census blocks, so you can't all of a sudden add another 250 people because it throws the balance off. And we tried our best. We did spend a lot of time on it.
Thank you, Sue. Sue DeGry.
So in case you weren't aware, either, council is not making these constraints. The constraints were put upon us, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? I'll take a motion then.
I know.
Sue Vaterlos.
I don't have it in front of me. Sorry, I'm using my computer and I'm not-
Okay.
Okay, hang on. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Pacifica 2018. Okay. Hang on. Sorry, I lost my page. One sec, these maps are taking up all my space here, so give me a sec. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance of the city coun- of the city-
Introduce and waive the first reading and read by title only the ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Providing for the Election of Members of the City Council by Five Districts Establishing the Boundaries and Identification Number of Each District Establishing the Election Order of Each District and Adding Chapter Nine District Elections."
What you said.
Second.
Excuse me, and just a note that the ordinance, which will, will be amended with the respect to the name of the attorney that presented the challenge.
Right, right. Okay, please vote.
I did.
And that passes five to zero.
Did we select map 505B? In that, I didn't hear us say that. We did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was in the, that was in the resolution and ordinance. Okay, next is an item for consideration, and this is the Draft Local Coastal Program Policies relating to Sea Level Rise Adaptation. And could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor Keener, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just wanted to introduce this and just begin by thanking Planning Director Tina Waremeister and Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor for the more than 18 months of hard work that they've dedicated to get this project to this important milestone. And I'll turn it over to Director Waremeister.
Thank you, and I, I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Connor, who will be giving the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. Tonight I will be presenting the process and policies that the city has been developing over the last 15 months regarding adapting to sea level rise. Maybe this isn't going to work. Great, thank you. The presentation tonight will review the purpose of the meeting, project background, stakeholder engagement, project deliverables, draft policy overview, optional edits to policies, next steps, and council's action. The following, in addition to city staff, we have the following consultants available to help answer questions: James Jackson, the project manager with ESA, and Charles Lester, coastal policy and planning expert. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive direction from council to move forward with incorporating the attached sea level rise adaptation policies into, into a revised draft local coastal plan, continue to, to, continue to seek and research funding opportunities from regional, state, and federal legislators and other organizations related to sea level rise, conduct community engagement on other aspects of the draft local coastal plan, and place consideration of adoption of the full draft local coastal plan on a future agenda. Starting with document history, the city is currently operating under an LCP from 1980. In 2019, the city began the process of updating the general plan and local coastal program. In 2019, draft documents were prepared but not adopted, and staff was directed by city council to conduct additional community engagement. Since that time, state regulatory requirements have changed and now require climate change adaptation and planning documents. Governor Brown approved Senate Bill 379, which requires local agencies to address climate adaptation and resiliency in long-range planning documents, and Governor's Executive Order Number B 30, I'm sorry, B dash 30 dash 15 directed state agencies to factor climate change into planning decisions. The 2014 draft LCP does not include detailed policies relating to sea level rise adaptation. So what is a LCP? Under the California Coastal Act, the 1970, under the California Coastal Act of 1976, the California Coastal Commission has decision-making and permit authority in the coastal zone. The coastal zone was mapped by the California Legislator as part of the Coastal Act. As shown in this figure, Pacifica's coastal zone is all property west of Highway One and one small area on the east side of the highway across from Maury Point. The Coastal Act provides for the adoption of an LCP by cities and counties in conformance with the Coastal Act, and once certified by the Coastal Commission, the LCP transfers permitting authority to the local jurisdiction. This is important in retaining local control over decisions that impact the community and acknowledges the unique characteristics of local communities and regional interests within the framework of the Coastal Act by preserving local control over most land use manner, matters. The Coastal Act clearly states that the Coastal Commission maintains review authority over tidallands, submerged lands, or on public trust lands. The LCP covers various topics, including but not limited to land use, public access in recreation, environmental and scenic resources, and natural hazards. Pacifica has experienced damage from coastal flooding and erosion hazards. The coastal erosion along Esplanade Avenue is likely one of Pacifica's most notorious examples. In response to these hazards, the city and private property owners have employed various approaches. In March 2018, the city council unanimously adopted the following goals to help guide the direction of the planning effort for the draft LCP update and adaptation planning. A summary of the goal include, a summary of the goals include bolster efficacy of public safety efforts, respond to climate change, preserve existing neighborhoods, and promote environmental justice and local economic vitality, preserve and enhance coastal access. The City of Pacifica applied for and received a local assistance grant from the California Coastal Commission and the California Coastal Conservancy. The scope of work and budget of the grant agreement assigned $185,000 of funds for consultant assistance. The grant agreement was fully executed in May 2017. In June 2017, the city issued a request for proposals for professional consultant services. Proposals were received from three firms. Staff recommended that the contract be awarded to ESA, and the council approved ESA's contract in August 2017. A stakeholder engagement plan was prepared by consultants at the start of this planning effort to identify community engagement objectives for the LCP update and outline specific activities to achieve, achieve those objectives. The stakeholder engagement plan was informed by interviews with the consult, interviews the consultant conducted with various stakeholders, including the City of Pacifica council members, member, Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, Real Estate Community, San Francisco Public Golf Alliance, Pacifica Environmental Family, and the Surf Rider Foundation. The stakeholder engagement activities included a city council ad hoc committee, a community work group, a technical work group, public workshops, public outreach, education and notification, and coastal commission coordination. In July 2017, the city council appointed John Keener and Sue Vaterlos to an ad hoc subcommittee on an as-needed base, basis to provide guidance on community communications and outreach and other administrative steps in the process. The city created a 16-member community work group from a list of applicants to characterize a broad and balanced representation of stakeholders in Pacifica. The purpose of creating this group was to ensure that the city received input from various stakeholders of Pacifica. The community work group members were selected in part based on their ability to reach out to their affiliated community groups, neighbors, and other hard-to-reach stakeholders on the behalf of the city. The city invited various representatives from federal, state, and local agencies to participate in the technical work group. The technical work group meetings provided a venue for productive inter-agency coordination and collaboration. Agency attendance varied between the three technical work group meetings, but attendees included the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Geological Survey, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, California Coastal Commission, Caltrans, California Coastal Conservancy, California Office of Emergency Services, California State Parks, California State Lands Commission, County of San Mateo, San Francisco Department of Recreation and Parks, and various Pacifica departments. Public workshops were held to educate the public on the planning effort and provide them an opportunity to review, discuss, and comment on draft versions of the city's major milestone documents and background documents. milestone documents and background documents. Workshops were open to the public and often provided an opportunity for members of the public to have their questions answered. The city used several public outreach methods to inform the public of the city's sea level rise planning effort. These efforts included a citywide mailer, public meetings, continuous updates to the sea level rise webpage, continuous updates sent to the sea level rise mailing list, regular mentions in the Connect with Pacifica e-newsletter, Pacifica Tribune notices, multiple mentions from the city and community work group members in the Pacifica Tribune, multiple posts on Nextdoor, multiple discussions at City Council meetings, and posting public meetings on YouTube. Additionally, staff attended special meetings to specifically talk about this topic. There was a Highway One electronic message sign, custom business cards with the sea level rise website and general information, which were distributed by the community work group and staff, postings at the planning department, a GIS web viewer was available to show hazards and asset data on the sea level rise webpage, extra staff meetings with neighborhood representatives and organizations who requested meetings, notably the Shoreview Neighborhood and representatives of the Fairway West Neighborhoods and the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. A summary of the public meetings is provided here. The council-approved grant agreement included a total of nine public outreach meetings. In March 2018, the City Council unanimously approved funds to support two additional meetings. And then in October 2018, the council approved the funding for a third extra meeting, which occurred during the adaptation phase of the project. City and coastal commission staff coordinated throughout the planning effort in accordance with the grant agreement. Coordination included coastal commission review of administrative draft copies of major deliverables, phone calls on an ad-needed basis, and a submittal of quarterly progress reports to the coastal commission staff. The coastal commission staff also participated in the technical work group meetings. While city staff reviewed, considered, and incorporated the coastal commission's staff's input where appropriate, city staff also balanced their input with all stakeholders, including the members of the work groups and the public, and ultimately prepared LCP policies that meet the needs and goals of Pacifica within the applicable regulatory and legal confines. The scope and process of the planning effort was defined in the grant agreement and is consistent with the process recommended by the coastal commission guidance. The scope included the phases shown here. Each phase provided information that was used in the succeeding phases. The vulnerability assessment and the adaptation plan documents served as background documents to inform and support the selection of the sea level rise adaptation policies. The vulnerability assessment focused on determining the potential exposures of assets to flooding and erosion hazards under six sea level rise scenarios, which included a no sea level rise/existent conditions as well as five state recommended scenarios. The document tabulated the asset exposures within the eight subareas. The adaptation plan provides the modeling results from the selected feasible adaptation strategies for each subarea. The plan identified environmental triggers for adaptation and the cost-benefit analysis of implementation. In accordance with the city's grant agreement, a managed-retreat adaptation strategy was evaluated in each subarea. This document was prepared to inform decision-making about sea level rise adaptation policies and is not a policy document. The draft LCP policies relating to sea level rise were drafted with consideration given to technical results, community input, and state law. The policies focus on protection and armoring of the shoreline and reassessment of the adaptation plan in the future. The policies provide more direction for monitoring and responding to coastal hazards, more clarification of requirements, and a stronger plan to support protection of our city's existing developments. Policies are not listed in order of priority. Attachment A of the staff report provides a summary comparison of the existing LCP policies compared to the draft LCP policies. As further detailed in that attachment, both existing and proposed draft LCP policies include key coastal act policies, Public Resource Code 30235 and 30253. Both of them require new projects to be safe for a design life of 100 years, prohibits the approval of projects which require seawalls as mitigation measure, and states that projects should not be approved, which will eventually need seawalls for the safety of the structure of residence. And both LCPs include the transfer of development rights process. Touching on a few of the draft policies, Policy Number Four states that the city shall implement its adaptation plan as expressed in the LCP general and subarea coastal hazard adaptation policies. As mentioned before, the adaptation plan does evaluate the managed-retreat strategy in each subarea in accordance with the city's grant agreement with the coastal commission. The adaptation plan is an informative document and not a policy document. None of the policies drafted in the LCP update include managed-retreat strategies. The policies support protection and accommodation measures for existing development and avoidance for new development. Policy Five and Six would direct the city to implement a monitoring program for adaptation strategies to record the success of adaptation efforts. The adaptation plan would be reassessed regularly using the data collected from monitoring. Policy Seven would direct the city to establish a mitigation program to identify enforceable measures to achieve proportional mitigation of resource impacts. Policy Eight would direct the city to establish a funding source through outside agency grants or through a local source. Each subarea has a specific approach based on environmental conditions and development context. Most follow the same pattern of maintaining and expanding armoring in the near term. With supplemental beach replenishment, policies may identify specific actions such as flood protection for West Sharp Park, but none of the subarea adaptation policies include There are policies addressing new developments along the shoreline regarding siting and design standards, assumption of risk for no future seawall commitment for new developments, avoidance of public trust lands, prohibition of bluff-based developments, and requiring non-conforming structures to conform, I'm sorry, requiring non-conforming structures to conform, and protection of private property prohibiting on the taking of private property. There are policies addressing protective structures regarding encouraging soft-protection strategies or beach nourishment, implementing a beach replenishment program, providing for repair and maintenance of existing seawalls, allowing armoring for existing development with monitoring and mitigate impacts individually or through a city program, and limiting authorization of shoreline structures to the life of the structure being protected. There are policies addressing coastal flooding and other hazards, including complying with the city's flood hazard ordinance, facilitating flood proofing of structures and flood zones, discouraging development on steep slopes, and avoiding active seismic faults, addressing hazards in tsunami run-up zones, addressing drainage and bluff erosion. Several comments and questions were made at the November 19, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Attachment B of tonight's staff report summarizes comments and provides responses to them. Some of the comments led staff to prepare optional revisions to the LCP policies for council's consideration. The following revisions are provided in the council's staff report. Revision A provides clarification to address the public's concern that adaptation strategies analyzed in the adaptation plan but not expressed in the sea level rise policies may later be incorporated into the policies without public input. This revision does not change the implementation of the policy and only provides clarification. So this proposal is to add a sentence that says amendments to the adaptation alternative evaluated in the adaptation plan that are not specifically expressed in these sea level rise hazard policies shall not be implemented without an amendment to the LCP, which requires public notice and an opportunity for public input. Revision B provides clarification to the term hard shoreline protective devices. In response to the public's want for more plain language, this revision does not change the implementation of the policy and only provides clarification. And it would include inserting some language that defines what a hard shoreline protective device is. Revision C provides clarification to the term shoreline. This revision does not change the implementation of policies and only provides clarification. So we're proposing this definition of shoreline. And Revision D would revise the definition of new development. The draft LCP policies document currently includes a definition for new development which competes with the definition of development in the Coastal Act. Staff perceives that the new development definition would create a hurdle with finding the policies consistent with the Coastal Act, which is required for certification of the LCP. Therefore, staff has identified a revision to the definition of new development, shown in strike-through and underline, that incorporates the Coastal Act's definition of development but maintains the city's intention of identifying what would be considered new development under our policies. Additionally, staff suggests adding a sentence to the definition to clarify what is not new development. This clarification would address some of the public's concern about what would be considered And finally, Revision E suggests removing the word "new" from the policy. It is not staff's intention to limit the need for technical reports for only new developments on the shoreline, but requires technical reports for all development on the shoreline. Staff identified the following revisions for council's consideration. Revision E would result in a change that would require all developments on the shoreline to obtain the appropriate technical reports. Reports could be waived for developments when appropriate, as described in this policy. So to help demonstrate how the draft policies may affect different properties, the presentation includes three scenarios. The first is for private residents along the shoreline. In this case scenario, a property owner of a pre-Coastal Act private residential development on the shoreline with existing protection structure in northwest Sharp Park subarea wants to remodel their home and wants to increase the coastal protection of their residents because they occasionally experience wave overtopping. I won't go through the policy comparison shown here, but what this slide is meant to show is the amount of policies that that property owner will be able to use to support their request to add on to their home and to expand their shoreline. And there would be many more under our new LCP policy. So the takeaway here is that the private residents would have clearly written and direct policies that would support the maintenance and expansion of their shoreline protection structure, which provide confidence that the city would be supportive of this improvement, would have the option of implementing supplemental adaptation strategies such as beach replenishment and elevating developments to address coastal hazards, and they would have a clear understanding of technical reports, mitigation, and monitoring requirements prior to proceeding with the permitting process, reducing unknowns associated with the process. In Case Scenario Two, an inland resident outside of any protected hazard zone but within the coastal hazard zone is concerned about how these policies will affect their property. Here is a comparison of the policies. The difference in policies here is that a study has been conducted using best available science, which shows that their property is not protected to be impacted by a coastal hazard through the year 2100. The takeaway for this scenario is that a private residence would have more information at their disposal to prove that their property is not protected to be impacted by coastal hazards through the year 2100, based on the best available science, and would not be applicable to these policies. And the final case scenario is we'll look at what the policies will do for the city in the expansion of an existing publicly-owned shoreline structure in West Sharp Park, protecting pre-Coastal Act development, such as Beach Boulevard, the Beach Boulevard Street and Again, I won't go through the policy comparison, but what you can see is that there would be more policies that the city would be able to use under our new LCP policies. The takeaway for this scenario is that the city would have a well-developed plan for adapting to sea level rise, which would be extremely beneficial when applying for grants and other funding support, would have environmental triggers to time the implementation of adaptation strategies appropriately, and monitor the data to identify when environmental triggers are hit, would have clearly written and direct policies that would support the maintenance and expansion of their shoreline protection structures, which would provide confidence to prospective adjacent residents and businesses that the city will protect the shoreline, would have the option of implementing soft-protection adaptation strategies to supplement and prolong the life of hard-protection adaptation strategies, would have a clear understanding of technical reports, mitigation, and monitoring requirements prior to proceeding with the permitting process, reducing unknowns associated with the process. The LCP policies related to sea level rise adaptation are only a portion of the policies included in the LCP. Staff will commence an effort to re-familiarize the council, planning commission, and the public on the remaining portions of the 2014 draft LCP, starting in 2019. As part of that effort, the draft LCP policies related to sea level rise will be incorporated into the 2014 draft LCP document to create the 2019 draft LCP document. The whole 2019 draft LCP will be brought to the City Council for adoption. Again, the council's requested action tonight is to provide staff with the direction to move forward with incorporating the attached sea level rise adaptation policies into the revised draft local coastal plan, continue to seek and research funding opportunities from regional, state, federal legislators, and other organizations related to sea level rise, conduct community engagement on other aspects of the draft local coastal plan, and place consideration of adoption of the full draft local coastal plan on a future agenda. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do we have questions from council?
Are all of the 900 pages of this plan that you have in front of you sent to the Coastal Commission with all the details, or is it just the 31 pages?
As part of our grant agreement, we've been required to send our products as we've been preparing them to the Coastal Commission, so they've received everything that you've received tonight.
Also, there were several questions about the triggers, and we don't really suggest what the triggers are. So is there any kind of reference to what the trigger is?
The triggers are detailed in the adaptation plan. Each policy is, the title of each policy is followed by some language in parentheses, which includes a bluff setback or a which includes a bluff setback or a sea level height, sea level height. Those would be the environmental triggers.
But a lot of them are zero, so...
Those mean- that means that they need- they're- they should be implemented immediately.
Someone else can ask questions.
Anybody else? Okay, I have a couple of questions. So regarding non-conforming structures in the shoreline areas, I think you had a comment on one of your slides on that, and if you could find that, I'd appreciate that. Back towards the beginning. Oops.
Is it?
I'm waiting for this to show up on there.
About non-conforming structures.
Yeah, this one?
Okay, requiring non-conforming structures to conform. And in the policies themselves, it says that, basically that- well, it says the degree of non-conformity shall not be increased. In other words, non-conforming structures that currently exist will be allowed to continue to exist, but they will not be able to increase the degree of their non-conformity.
Yeah, I think that nuance may have gotten lost in the summarization for this.
Yeah, and so what would be an example of a non-conforming criterion?
If a- if there is a- an existing home on the shoreline that is not meeting required setbacks from the bluff to last 100 years of erosional rates, but they are going to be able to build a wall to protect their property, they'll be able to conform with the LCP policies if- as long as they're showing that the non-conforming structure will be able to exist in a non-hazardous manner.
Okay. What's that?
Can I do a follow-up on your question?
Yeah. Mike?
So, okay, now getting into, let's say that non-conforming structure is- burns down, okay, or there's something happens to it. If it is rebuilt, let's say it's back in Park Pacifica. If it's rebuilt, it would be required to conform to existing standards or would be able to use the current footprint?
Let me just interrupt there. This is regarding non-conforming structures in shoreline areas.
Well, no, I'm getting- what I'm basically wanting to find out is if it's a non-conforming structure now, when it- if it burns down or falls down, will it be able to be built to be non-conforming, or will it have to conform to the new policies? Now, I was trying to find out is, is it- what's our existing policy now and what would be the policy in the local coastal plan?
If it's 100% loss of the house, there's a percentage, but if it- if the entire house is, you know, burns down and needs to be demolished, then you rebuild according to the current standards.
So then would it be considered- would it then- it would not then be considered existing development, it would be considered new development?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine. I understand.
So you're just asking generally, yeah?
Generally, yeah.
Right.
Okay, would they be able to get the benefits of an existing development versus a new development?
So, no, so I can pull up the code section if the conversation continues, but if your house burns down and say you had a non-conforming front setback, you can rebuild because your house is- it's zoned residential, but you need to conform to the setbacks.
Okay, but will that be new development or existing development?
I don't think that new versus existing nuance doesn't really have- it doesn't really translate to any- to anywhere else in the city other than right on the shoreline.
Well, that's basically what I'm- I was- I kind of was going on a tangent, and I guess that wasn't a good tangent. Okay, so, but basically, okay, because under the residential building guidelines that they've kind of put off for a little bit, if you improved a piece of property to a certain percentage, you were then considered new development, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And you were a lot more restricted as to what you could do to protect your property. If, under these policies now, if a property is burned down and totally destroyed and is rebuilt, okay, is that considered new development now, or is it old development?
So this relates to a revision that staff is suggesting.
Exactly.
It is on packet page 123, so the new development definition. So new development does not include the alteration of an existing development, so that gets to the question of, you know, people were asking about putting in new siding, changing, you know, replacing the roof, and also doing some additions, and nor does replacement of a structure destroyed by a natural disaster within the past 12 months that is still not new development.
And natural disaster would include a fire?
Yes.
Or any other kind of...
Any other kind of...
Truck runs into it, or...
Bike or something.
Yeah.
Act of God.
Act of God, or act of, okay, bad driver.
Okay.
Okay, no, I just wanted to follow up on your...
Okay, you're good on that. And I have one other question regarding existing shoreline structures, hazard policy 57. And so it says that repair and maintenance activity shall not result in any enlargement or extension of the shoreline structure, or any C-word encroachment or impairment of public trust resources. So, you know, the main thing is, for me anyway, any enlargement or extension of the shoreline structure. However, replacement, it says in the last sentence, replacement of 50% or more of the shoreline structure by volume, length, or whatever constitutes a new shoreline structure. So it sounds as if expansion of the shoreline structure by less than 50% does not constitute a new shoreline structure. Is that- am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions right now? Oh, dear, dear.
So in that scenario, if someone on the shoreline wanted to add a new bathroom that was less than 50% of the footprint of their house, they'd be able to do that?
So the 50% that Mayor Keener was referring to is the protection structure and not the development, we'll just say household development structure.
Okay, so then I had a few questions I was going to ask after, but after the public hearing?
But let's pursue that just for now. So how does that work for development instead of shoreline structures? Is less than 50% of the developed structure, if you're remodeling your house and you add on less than 50% or you change less than 50%, is that allowed?
We don't establish any threshold for what's considered redevelopment.
So the- if I could jump in, the 50% I think has come up a lot in the conversation in the community because it is, I believe, a reference from the draft residential guidelines that the coastal commission published. And so our- the city's recommended policies before you tonight do not- does not contain that language. So the homeowner who's on a shoreline, who's looking to add on to their home, would need to demonstrate that the area is safe and that they meet the standard requirements that anybody else would on their lot. They have a coverage amount, they have side setbacks, they have front setbacks, they have rear setbacks, they have a maximum height limit, and that would be their, I guess, limitations, you could say, but not based on just because they have a thousand-square-foot home, that they're limited in some way if they can fit a larger home on their lot safely.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
And in that same scenario, the LCP serves as the governing policy, but are there also at a shore- on a shoreline structure permits that have to be acquired through the coastal commission on top of that, or does this serve as that?
So if this LCP ends up being certified and it's in effect in the future, then the city would have permitting jurisdiction on top of the bluff, you could think of it, and then the coastal commission would continue to have permitting authority over the actual any permits that they would need for the seawall or rock revetment, whatever they may be doing for protection.
Okay, so essentially, yes, they would probably have to go through the coastal commission anyway, on the shoreline?
Yes.
Okay, so, and the questions that I'm about to ask is simply, well, I want an answer, but also to inspire some thought in those who are probably going to speak. And we don't have to, but what we usually do is try to get answers to your questions if you have them. And so my question is, why is managed retreat in the adaptation plan? Why did we evaluate that strategy?
So we evaluated that strategy, one, because the coastal commission through the grant agreement required that that strategy be evaluated by the jurisdiction, and that's not unusual for Pacifica. That's all of the same grants that other cities are getting, from my understanding, also have that requirement. And it is- it is an option when dealing with adaptation planning, and we needed to be able to show that the city considered all viable options. And then the city, as Ms. O'Connor pointed out in her presentation, we considered all of the feedback we received, the goals that the council set, and basically all of the information that's particular to Pacifica and our community. And we believe that we've selected adaptation policies that are appropriate and they protect the city, and that's what we're recommending that the council direct us to include in the LCP.
Okay, and so I just want to kind of repeat what I think I heard. So we considered managed retreat because we had to, because it's the smart thing to do. When you're even writing a business plan, you can- and you're trying to get a loan, and you have to present a business plan, you consider all options. You put together a marketing strat- you put together an exit strategy, just in case. Nobody wants to ever use that exit strategy. But if you're looking for help with something and people are going to give you money to do something, you have to consider everything is a smart move, right? So if we didn't consider managed retreat as an option, then we wouldn't be doing ourselves right. That my- so, so I get distracted, sorry. So we were doing a good thing by saying, hey, we studied this all, even managed retreat, and then sitting on top of just that, that sort of planning, that analysis, we say, you know what, it's probably not the best one that we decided on. So these are the policies that we're recommending. Managed retreat is not one of them, but it- we studied it. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions?
No questions. I'm going to wait.
Okay. In that case, I'll- I have a number of speaker cards, and we'll start with that. Jeff Gueye, followed by Janine Manna, followed by Gordon Tenura.
Evening. Thank you. I acknowledge all the work that staff has done for the LCP. I think it's a good start, but we got a long ways to go. Who here is comfortable with that new definition of new development? I don't see any hands. Who's not happy with that? Let's see some hands there. So there is a lot of ambiguity in this. I saw a scenario, too, that was from my neighborhood specifically, that said that we are not in a hazard zone, we're not going to be covered by any sort of policies or managed retreat or anything like that, but it's not in the plan. It's great to see it in a presentation, but it's not in the plan. There is a map there that shows water hitting some of my resident- my neighbors' houses. Those houses, that map is, first of all, written by ESA. It was rejected by the Army Corps of Engineers. It was rejected by the ABAG. They pulled funding because they did not trust the data that was there. Bob Battaglia from ESA, who wrote the report, said his information has not been peer reviewed. The policy itself says it's based on best available science, which it defines as peer reviewed science. None of it has been peer reviewed. How can that be the best? How can this council send a document that is knowingly flawed to the California Coastal Commission for their approval? There's so many ambiguities there, the coastal commission is just going to run roughshod over everything. They're going to come up with their own definitions. Speaking of which, that new development definition, that 50% of a building, if it has been remodeled, 50% of the square footage, is now new development. That includes any building that has had a new roof put on since 1971. It's a cumulative addition. Every time you add something on, it goes toward that 50%. It's not 50% at one time. It's all work that's been done since '71, when the coastal commission act went into effect. This just cannot go forward. It's not ready. There's no reason to rush it. We have until December 31st, 2019 to put it in. I'm not saying we need to wait until then, but we need to be- get rid of the vagaries. Let us work with you and make this document better. It's in no condition to go to them. If you look up the word elevate in this, hazard policy 26, take a look at that, zero sea level rise, and it tells... sea level rise, and it tells us to elevate properties on the shoreline.
Wrap it up, Jeff. Okay, thanks. Janine Manna, followed by Gordon Tenura, followed by Spencer Potter.
Good evening, council members. Janine Manna, North Central Coast District Manager with the California Coastal Commission. We want to commend the city for tackling difficult sea level rise issues and for starting to identify practical measures to address such issues moving forward. We also really appreciate the willingness of your staff to work with us to date. It is our common goal to maintain a resilient coastal community in Pacifica and protect our state's valuable coastal resources for current and future generations. We believe that the proposed policies include important planning provisions and provide a good foundation for the LCP update. However, there are still some details which require refinement to ensure that the proposed policies are comprehensive, feasible, and consistent with the Coastal Act. For example, the current policies do not adequately address redevelopment of properties in coastal hazard areas and leave a lot of future adaptation considerations to a time uncertain. Other such details that we feel need better refinement have been outlined in our October 19th letter to the city. We do recognize that addressing new and existing development in Pacifica is a complex challenge, especially given the scope of current and future hazards, combined with existing patterns of development and shoreline armoring, and uncertainties about future sea level rise. As we have conveyed to city staff, there are policy approaches that would allow for continued reliance on armoring for certain development over a specified time horizon, as identified in the city's current sub-area policies. However, such policy approaches still need to ensure that the impacts to other coastal resources, like public access for all Californians, would be mitigated, and need to build in an understanding that other adaptation options may be necessary if and when strategies like armoring and beach nourishment can no longer provide for this adequate protection for both development and for coastal resources. As such, we would greatly prefer to have more staff-to-staff working sessions to better address these policy approaches and refinements prior to adoption of such policies. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Janine. Gordon Tenura, followed by Spencer Potter, followed by Margaret Goodell.
Thank you. My name's Gordon Tenura, and I'm a 38-year resident of Pacifica and recently a member of the Sea Level Rise Community Work Group. I'd like to share three comments with you tonight. Number one, it's been identified by several individuals, including me, and the Coastal Commission that the data used for analysis in creating the final draft adaptation plan was in part incorrect, unclear, and largely insufficient. As this is the foundation from which the policies have been derived, this puts at grave risk that the resulting conclusions and their implementations are wrong. Furthermore, the inclusion of anything labeled as "final draft" into the local coastal plan in any form makes no sense to me. A final draft must move to a final state, and I do not believe it's in a state to do so. Secondly, I certainly support the fact that climate change is occurring and that the sea level is rising. I've also found that the extent of the change to be speculative and based on varying models with few constants, with some identification of best available science. What is clear to me in going forward, there must be a managed process, not retreat, but a determined, ongoing effort to monitor what actually does occur, manage efforts to address the changes, and work broadly with others in our immediate community and our neighboring communities and authorities. I recommend that the council direct the city staff to create responsibilities and accountabilities for that ongoing effort and initiate recruitment of a full-time position specifically to implement aspects identified in the policies. For example, monitoring, reassessing, identifying funding needs and solutions, assisting landowners, and developing the shoreline mitigation program. The incremental needs are substantial, and I do not believe they can or should be performed by current staff. Finally, I'd like to comment on the process that's transpired, and particularly the role of the working group, the community working group. In effect, the community working group had no more role than any member of the community. There was no collaboration with staff or the consultants, other than the public review and comment process that all citizens had the opportunity to participate in. Comments provided were filed away and no discussion ensued, except as responses to comments that were weeks and months in their provision and in difficult form at that. While part of the role of the working group was to reach out and engage the community, and I and several members did do that in a variety of different ways, there's no dialogue between the christened working group and the consultants and staff. There was no working with in this working group. If the council and the city staff wish to engage a working group for some issue in the future, then they need to indeed work with that group. I'd be happy to participate in a postmortem on the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Potter, followed by Margaret Goodell, followed by Stan Zivan.
Good evening, Mayor Keener, Pacifica City Council and Pacifica City Staff. My name is Spencer Potter, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the San Francisco Recreation and Parks Department, Natural Resources Division. Hazard Policy 4, in the draft policy states that the city shall implement its sea level rise adaptation plan as expressed in the LUP's general and sub-area coastal hazard adaptation policies. The Rec and Park Department has serious concerns with this draft policy insofar as it incorporates and implements Pacifica Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. During the course of the LCP process, the Rec and Park Department has provided the city of Pacifica with our concerns on elements of the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan, and specifically, it's an economic analysis. This analysis does not give any value at all to the wetland and endangered species habitat in the Laguna Salada area, in the Sharp Park, our Sharp Park property. It also does not give any, it also undervalues non-beach recreational property as compared with all other types of property, specifically beach, recreational areas, residential and commercial property. This assumption in the plan leads to the flawed conclusion that a managed retreat adaptation alternative at Sharp Park, which is where our wetlands are, is the least expensive option, because wetlands and also public recreational land is very cheaply valued under the model that was chosen. These deficiencies in the model render the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan's economic analysis as unreliable, and therefore, we do not support that analysis as being implemented as part of the draft LCP policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spencer. Margaret Goodell, followed by Stan Zivan, followed by Victor Carmichael.
Good evening, council. Thank you, staff, for your remarkable work. It's very clear this evening that no one agrees with anything, but we already have good thorough information. We have information about all the possibilities of what may happen, what could happen, what might happen, what likely will happen. We also have information about the costs. We can no longer ignore or pretend that Pacifica is immune to ongoing coastal erosion, which will only get worse as we move forward with sea level rise. Last week, The Chronicle reported that Stanford Climate Group says that our CO2 emissions are going up, are continuing to rise. That means that sea level will be affected more sooner. So, let's take the next step, let's move forward. There's hard work ahead. Let's approve the policies, knowing that we yet have work to do, to please the Coastal Commission and to please all of the residents who are unhappy. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan Zivan, followed by Victor Carmichael, followed by Richard Harris.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to, first of all, once again, thank the staff and the city council, most of whom seem to have a firm grasp of the process, the science, and want to do the very best for the citizens of Pacifica. I have several concerns, of which I'm only going to address one tonight, and that is something that Deirdre and Sue DeGruy were talking about in the last meeting, which is, there seems to be a goodly amount of money available for this city, but the city needs to have a plan in place to get some of that. I don't know how much of that is dependent on that. However, looking at the last draft of the policies, I noticed that the CCC had pages worth of changes they would like to see. The problem I foresee is that with the new council coming in, there is a very big possibility that there could be a lengthy back-and-forth between the CCC and the city of Pacifica whereby we never get a plan put in place for the next couple of years. That, to me, could be a huge problem in the sense that that would cut us off from some of the very funds that everybody wants to see. So, from what I can see, the Caltrans, I'm sorry, Samcar, has set themselves up in a catch-22 whereby the very money they would like to see, that is armoring, may not be available because the plan they want in place is at odds with what the CCC wants to see from us from their grant. Anyway, I sure hope the city can work this out in the next couple of years. A lot of us will be watching. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor Carmichael, followed by Richard Harris, followed by Sam Cassius.
Thank you very much for an opportunity to speak. I'll be real quick, I usually run out of time. I'm going to run through 10 reasons that I believe the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Policies should be included in the revised draft LCP. Number one, we must maintain the progress and momentum, forward momentum of all the work that's been completed thus far. ESA did as instructed, despite strong headwinds from real estate industry and angry, misinformed homeowners. ESA identified the vulnerabilities and proposed ways to adapt. What else would you want a contractor to do? It's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all plan. They have developed eight separate plans for eight specifically different coastal zones in Pacifica. The dreaded term "managed retreat" was removed with the adaptation alternatives in each of these eight coastal zones, due to irrational fear of negative impact on property values. Nevertheless, consideration of that alternative will probably eventually be required, whether by the Coastal Commission or by hard reality. The IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, is probably understating the threat of climate change. Governments will likely fail to slow climate change in any appreciable way. In the long run, there will never be enough funding to pay for all the sand replenishment, seawalls, and revetment necessary here or elsewhere. We will be competing for federal and state money from cities like Los Angeles, Miami, and the Big Inchalata, the island of Manhattan. We are on our own. Coastal communities must have a realistic plan in place, and those that do will have a better chance of retaining property values. Those that don't and have base wishful schemes or hung up in entangled arguments, like it looks like what's going to happen here, I didn't make it. This is, this is the time to put aside longstanding animosities between environmentalists and realitators and unite for a common purpose. It is a golden opportunity for us as a coastal community in the eye of a storm to develop a model LCP, maybe even one that other communities would draw from. Let's move forward and not backwards. I urge the city council to vote yes to incorporate sea level rise adaptation policies into the revised LCP. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Harris, followed by Sam Cassius, followed by Larry Bothon.
Good evening, council. We've all been at this for a long time, and we're all working hard on it, and thank you. I'm Richard Harris, I'm with the Public Golf Lines. I've given you a lengthy letter, took me quite a while, you've been going through your I would like you to look at the Exhibit A, which is about the very eighth page from the end, I have exhibits at the end of it, and the final exhibit, and I'll talk about them briefly. The Exhibit A is a disclaimer that is in the language from your consultant on the adaptation plan, and it says, don't count on the data, this is low cost, and we will, the data that we have is not detailed. And then, what you have from the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission, in your grant, it sets forth, and I've given you Exhibit B, which is your grant language from the Coastal Commission, and among other things, that Coastal Commission grant says, value the ecology, value the homes, value coastal assets, coastal assets is a defined term, it includes reasonably priced residential. Value your trails, value all beach and coastal recreation. The Coastal Commission is not the Beach Commission, it's the Coastal Commission. And so, coastal recreation includes trails that are away from the beach, or golf courses that sit near but not on the beach. And none of those things are valued. In your cost-benefit analysis, it says these things are outside the scope. It says ecology is outside the scope. That's just mind-boggling, really. So, the cost-benefit analysis, when they come to the end of their line on the cost-benefit analysis, they put no value on the cost of replacement of low-income housing, because they say that they are unaware of it. Your goals identify where the low-income housing is in this town. They didn't bother to try and find it. They had people writing them letters, saying, my neighborhood is full of low-income housing. They didn't bother to say, where is the low-income housing? And so, you have a cost-benefit analysis that, because it disregards what is behind the beach and inflates what is on the beach, which is the very last thing I want to show you, is a statement.
You've got to wrap it up right now.
I will, I will wrap it up. The very last thing to show you is you have a statement that says you will not consider a report from the CSRMP, and that is your only evidence of trail use. You have no studies of trail use of, yeah, there is no studies of beach use, except at Pacifica Beach.
That's enough, Rich.
Okay, look at that, you've promised not to use it, and you're adapting to it.
City Council, Mayor John Keener, I really want to thank you, first and foremost, for all the hard work you've been doing this. I've been a part of this planning since, actually, when we did the GPU updates for five years, so I know the hard work that's gone into it, and the fact that now there's a lot of disingenuous information going around to stop the process is in itself disingenuous. But I'm going to focus my comments on just some of the discrepancies that we need to fix, but please do pass the plan today. And it's specific to the property known as the Kalsum Field. So, in the view of the proposed Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan, there are multiple errors that just need corrections concerning the undeveloped five acres known as the Kalsum Field. On page 73 of the Wetlands section of the plan, there says that there's only two primary areas of wetlands habitat in Pacifica, Laguna Salada and the mouth of San Pedro Creek, when in fact, the whole Kalsum Field is a documented designated federal wetlands and the USF/WS Wetlands National Inventory. That error is also in Appendix B of the unconfirmed wetlands, so if you see Exhibit A, it's there, I don't know how that was missed. The same section of the wetland states that no data on the California Red Leg Frog is available for local region in San Pedro Creek, when in fact, again, the culvert that leads to San Pedro running along the property has been documented as a known red leg frog habitat, see Exhibit B. Most importantly, the Pacific Institute's hazard map and program modeling that's on the website, the Pedro Point Field is actually fully underwater with 4.6 feet of sea level rise. Pacifica is using a 5.7 scenario, yet it only shows a portion of the field underwater in its SLR scenario. So, this needs to be corrected. So this needs to be corrected, and also note that FEMA also utilizes the Pacific Institute as source for the SLR flooding, see Exhibit C for that. So specifically to transfer development credits, the section in Pedro Point, this property should fall under the guidance of the recommendation of the State of California's Natural Resources Agency safeguards in California reducing climate risk. Document states on Page 12, Paragraph 4, "One opportunity to achieve broad environmental benefits is through the use of natural infrastructure solutions to mitigation." This broad benefits, restoration and conservation of natural systems such as forests goes on wetlands, so this is a wetland we're talking about. So for example, wetlands can provide protection from flooding while also providing valuable habitat and other hydrological benefits. And then it also goes on to say in this document on Page 179, "In order to minimize the adverse effects of sea level rise and storms, it is important to carefully consider decisions regarding areas of vulnerable flooding, inundation, and erosion. The state should not build or plan to build, lease, or permit any structures on these." So again, with that, I ask you to consider these corrections here, and I'll make sure that also the-
Larry Bothon, followed by Celeste Langill, followed by Suzanne Drake.
Good evening. I'm Larry Bothon, I'm from East Rockaway, a couple hundred feet above sea level, thankfully. If the November election was about anything, it was a referendum on the current city council and a resounding rejection of managed retreat. And yet we're gathered here tonight to debate the adoption of the local coastal plan by a lame-duck council whose authority to do so has already been revoked by the citizens of Pacifica. To even think about holding this vote before the new council is seated smacks of the same kind of power grab that's happening in Wisconsin's Republican Legislature, where they're currently writing legislation to strip the powers of the newly-elected Democratic governor and attorney general while they still have a Republican governor to sign the bills. It's not just anti-democratic, it's an act of sheer defiance of the voters' will. If you adopt this deeply flawed local coastal plan now, you're thumbing your noses at everyone who voted to change the downward spiral that we've been in. The local coastal plan was designed to be a managed retreat plan from the get-go, and that's why ESA got the job. They deliberately undervalued residential properties, businesses, and even infrastructure, and yet they completely ignored recreational assets like our trails and our historic golf course to reach a preordained conclusion that a day at the beach was worth 40 bucks a day, so it makes perfect sense to let everything else west of Coast Highway go to hell. Put another way, you wouldn't hire the Center for Biodiversity to develop a plan to renovate Sharp Park Golf Course when you know their goal is to turn it into a swamp, but that's essentially what happened with ESA and the local coastal plan. The most common excuse for a managed retreat plan is because that's what the Coastal Commission wants and expects in the local coastal plan. Just because they demand it does not obligate us to accept it. The second most common excuse is that the Coastal Commission paid for this. Excuse me, they did not. We paid for it, the taxpayers. It's not their money, it's ours, and we have every right to demand a fair and objective study that develops a plan to protect Pacifica from sea level rise. As for adopting the current plan, I'm of two minds: no and hell no. Thank you.
Celeste Langill, followed by Suzanne Drake, followed by Chris Redfield.
Thank you. I'd like to urge the city council to pass these policies. I think the previous speaker was greatly mistaken, and there's several reasons, but one, we've been working on this process, the city, for more than 18 months. This council is fully entitled to pass these policies, they've been the council that's been working on them. So they have got up to speed and they know these policies, so please pass these policies. We have experts, national experts, that have worked on this, and I don't think people, most people know that the San Mateo County has passed a vulnerability assessment themselves. I worked on one of the citizens advisory committees. The same maps that are in this are the same maps that the county used, including West Sharp Park and West Fairway. Those are the same maps. There was a different consultant, Arcadis. Arcadis came up with the same information. There's no bias here, it's good science, there's no problem, so please pass it. The elephant in the room here is coastal erosion. Yes, there's sea level rise, this plan, policies are built around triggers, so if there's no sea level rise, there will be no trigger. We already have coastal erosion. I would estimate that Pacifica's lost at least 40 housing structures over the past 20 or 30 years to coastal erosion. Go walk along the beach, along Palmetto, along Esplanade, it looks like something out of a sci-fi movie with buildings hanging off the cliffs. We are the poster child for coastal erosion. So these policies are not just sea level rise, they are for ongoing coastal erosion that will continue to take away homes and businesses. Nothing will change if we don't have policies in place, and it's ridiculous not to pass these, so we have money to protect those homes and businesses. As far as the question in here regarding new development and shoreline structures, my understanding, and I hope someone can clarify this, is shoreline structures are the actual seawall and rock revetments that are used to protect development, and so there's nothing in here, these policies, about prohibiting adding to development, which is just the footprint, you know, private property footprint, which there's already zoning laws that apply to development, just like the issue was raised about what if a fire burned down a house? That's what you're talking about, you're talking about development in existing building. So I hope that someone can clarify this, but I really urge the council to pass these policies and to get more money to protect our city and our existing homes and businesses, and to protect our beaches as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Drake, followed by Chris Redfield, followed by Delia McGrath.
I too want to thank everyone for all their hard work. Obviously, there's a lot going on here. I don't think this is a good idea to pass this at this time, there's just a lot of missing information, a lot of missing data. Also, I asked this question at one of the workshop meetings, how third-party vendors would react, for instance, insurance, lending, financial institutions, any other data of similar communities that have faced a similar situation, maybe on the East Coast? And there was no response, no information, no studies done. So I'm going to ask that again, pretty sure there is no information on that today either. So let's maybe put that in our questions, since that question was presented before and, you know, we're trying to catch up on those sorts of things. Also, the slides today, they're relatively new to me, are they available? Because you had case scenarios there.
We'll answer that after the-
Okay, that would be very nice. In any case, you know, how home values would be affected, again, we can actually take other communities, not necessarily on the West Coast, because this kind of thing is relatively new to us, but on the East Coast, these things have been presented. How have those cities been affected? How have their home values, lending institutions, other financial institutions? If you put a number on it, say 2050, so someone's looking for a 30-year loan, what are the chances of them getting a 30-year loan? Additionally, if you say you needed to withdraw money out of your house for whatever reason, you're sick, you have cancer, whatever the problem is, what's the likelihood of a lending institution even giving you any dollars on a home that doesn't have any equity? So we need to be really cautious, and there's still just a ton of holes, let's hold off on this for a while, and let's get some answers to these ancillary questions, because these people are all looking to keep their home values and actually have more full questions answered. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Chris Redfield, followed by Delia McGrath, followed by Frank Villa.
Good evening, Chris Redfield. First, let me say the long-term plans, the short-term consequences. The city has stated in its website, to paraphrase, "It cannot say if the LCP will affect home prices or insurance costs or availability in the future." It's been 30 years since the City of Pacifica had an LCP, short of 2009 and 14, an attempt. I have to laugh when I hear the arguments of out-of-town money influencing the future of Pacifica. The California Coastal Commission spent $185,000 to influence Pacifica's future. Do any commissioners live in Pacifica? The Honorable Carol Groom might be the closest. The LCP is mandated to be revisited every five years by law. Amendment can be done to the LCP as needed. Councils change every two to four years, I can't emphasize that enough. ESA and Bob Italyo, I wish I could have monitored the sleep patterns and the blood pressure of Tina Waremeister during the consultant hiring process. Mr. Italyo is a brilliant, accomplished, biased-to-the-environment engineer who worked to return the golf course to nature. This draft LCP seems horribly biased to the same extreme. Why does the Coastal Commission always state they're for public access to the coast, beaches, et cetera, while almost literally leaving real tangible property as a secondary consideration? In my opinion, they are peddling influence and morphing beyond their intended purpose. City manager Kevin Woodhouse recently stated the city does not recommend managed retreat in the draft LCP. To me, that sounds like a definite maybe. I believe you're earning the feathers recently put in your cap. I salute you. This is a war with the sea. We may win, we may lose, but we should never give up the ground unnecessarily. Thank you.
Delia McGrath, followed by Frank Villa, followed by Amber Waters.
Good evening, council, and the viewing audience and the people here, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to support this plan and hope that it will be accepted tonight by the city council. There's been tremendous hard work over the 18 months or more since this plan has been worked upon, and I attended two of the community workshops, which were revealing in some ways and also really hard to be part of because there was so much contention. I've read most of the plan. I think that the changes that have been made and incorporated after a lot of community input are really good and on the way to manage the conflicts around this. I think that the consultants did a very fine and thorough jobs in offering us something that we could really use in our city, and, you know, the sea level rise is going to happen, and I think that being prepared with a plan that may not be 100% perfect and won't meet everybody's needs, but in addition to private property ownership in our city, we have city infrastructure that needs to be protected, and most of us do not live in the coastal zone, and I think that the ones who do hopefully have some hope that they can be helped if they need it. So I think that it would be far better to go ahead and pass this plan and know that there will need to be amendments and changes along the way, but it's a really excellent plan, and thank you for all the hard work that went into it.
Thank you. Frank Villa, followed by Amber Waters, followed by Tim Blanchard.
Hello, Frank Villa, lifelong resident of Pacifica, and I live in Lindemar in a property that soon will be engulfed by the designation of the local coastal plan. The local coastal plan should be stopped now. Managed retreat is part of this report in a suggestive way to deal with an issue that may be 50 years ahead of us. The city in the least has been unclear regarding many aspects of this report. Much is made about managed retreat being removed from the LCP, but a simple document word search shows that assertion is not true. Property owners, residents, and businesses are bewildered and unprepared for the results of this report. Definitions of development or redevelopment have not been clearly explained to Pacifica residents as we've seen tonight. It is unknown what will happen should a property be designated to be in some sea level rise zone at this point. Will a property owner or business be able to refinance, lease, purchase, or sell a property? It's questionable. Will the value of that property be changed due to implication of this report or actions of the city or state or federal agencies because of this report not being accurate? This action needs to stop now before the city is subject to lawsuits and further deterioration of our reputations in pursuit of these actions. I would like to thank the staff for acknowledging SAMCAR, San Mateo County Associates Realtors, for assisting in getting out information on the local coastal plan to the community. I also want to say that the wrong call in Five Acres on Peter Point has continually been under siege by residents' communities, some here tonight, and there's been chances to develop that property, but it's always had opposition by the same people who are proposing this local coastal plan. Thank you.
Amber Waters, followed by Tim Blanchard, and that is the last speaker card that I currently have. If there are more, please bring them up.
Hi, my name is Amber Waters. I am a homeowner in Fairway Park West, as well as a proud resident of Pacifica. I love Pacifica, it's a great place. And I, and many of my neighbors, recognize that we need a plan, we need an LCP, but we want one that is based on the most accurate, peer-reviewed science. Fairway Park West has been bulldozed into the hazard zone unjustly, putting our homes and financial futures at great risk. The current LCP is being pushed forward too hastily. Voters of Pacifica have spoken, and they've spoken loudly, that they do not want this plan. We want a full understanding of the plan and its impacts, specifically on private property owners, businesses along the coast, the environment, and especially attracting future investment in Pacifica, most importantly, the development of the Sharp Park downtown. Please do not pass this plan, we don't want it.
Tim Blanchard, followed by Claire Irvin-Lee, followed by Cindy Abbott.
Good evening, council. I've been up here and spoke many times against the managed retreat, and you say you've taken it out. As to the Coastal Commission's comments earlier, they seem confused by the new development, redevelopment, and the LCP. Furthermore, I think you should table this, due to that confusion, and also when I read between the lines of what the Coastal Commission had to say and the letter to Tina Waremeister from Janine Manna on October 19th, I believe it was, it seems like there's managed retreats in there between, when you read between the lines. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Irvin-Lee, Cindy Abbott, and followed by Jim Kramer.
Managed retreat should be in there. It should be in there very clearly instead of in some sort of ambiguous language, because very frankly, you can't vote it away, it's happening, sea level, I mean, sea level rise is happening, and what we need to have is a plan in the worst-case scenario, so we're not all stampeding to get out when, oh my God, the disaster happens. Nobody wants to lose their property, nobody wants to lose their lives. We need to just respect the fact that sea level rise is happening, and we probably are not going to be able to do much to stop it. So we need to plan for it, we need to pass this plan now. If it needs to be amended, fine, amend it. If we get more information, fine, do that. But in the meantime, we need to have money available for the worst-case scenario. We need to have a plan available for the worst-case scenario. And we need to stop worrying about what the insurance companies are going to do, because very frankly, they aren't going to be reading this report and deciding whether or not to insure a property that's going to be underwater. They already know what's going on. They're not stupid. They're in business to make money. Now, the only question is, are we all going to get out safely, or are we going to be stampeding and running over ourselves? We need a plan for the worst-case scenario. Do your jobs. You're not a lame duck to anything. You're all here until the day you're out. Thank you.
Cindy Abbott, followed by Jim Cramer, followed by Connie Menefee.
Good evening, Cindy Abbott, 22-year West Sharp Park resident. And I'd also like to thank the city staff, the consultants, and city council members for so many months of work that have gone into this process, bringing awareness about sea level rise and the need for adaptation policies to the City of Pacifica. Because almost 40 years is a really long time to go with a plan. And it really hasn't helped us very much, has it? In those 40 years, we've experienced a lot of changes on our coastline. In 1983, in Pacifica Skies Estate, over 20 meters, 65 feet of bluff receded, forcing the removal of an entire row of mobile homes and a street. In 1998, 10 homes were condemned and eventually removed, and two additional homes were just removed in the last year. Between 2010 and 2016, three significant apartment buildings had to be removed from our bluffs because of coastal erosion. In February of 2016, Beach Boulevard experienced a significant sinkhole. And then later in that year, in December, a trail, a very popular trail in Cliffside, also had a major sinkhole. But did we have a plan? Did we have anything to work on? Had we done anything proactively? No. These things just happened because we did not have a plan, and we've only been reacting. So we need now for our city to move forward and to approve, which may not be perfect, but to approve the current sea-level-rise adaptation policies, so that we can continue in the coming year in working together to develop the local coastal plan. And that's what we're talking about tonight, is just adapting the policies. We have a lot more work to do together with everybody as we continue to learn about this. And I'd like to see in that process that we also commit to, what we're going to, should have been doing all along, is constantly reviewing this and updating it, refining it, and perfecting it. We're all going to be learning a lot in this. But what I really think we need to see is a proactive approach, not reacting, working now to think about what infrastructure might need to be removed, relocated. Gosh, we could get something new as well in doing that. So let's commit to doing this together. As Mayor Pro Tem Vatalas stated at the very beginning of this in her opening comments here tonight, and Jackie Spears' quote, "The sea is rising, and we are not prepared."
Thank you. Jim Cramer, followed by Connie Menefee, and that is the last speaker card I have, unless there are more back there.
Hi, Jim Cramer. I'm a resident of Sharp Park since 2008, and have been a member of the citizens' working group in this process. I don't want to appear as an apologist for the city, speaking here now. I didn't originally plan to speak tonight. And I'll say that I disagreed with lots of parts of the process as we went along as a member of the working group. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I changed my mind. As a retired oceanographer and a member of the working group, I've followed the progress of this local coastal plan revision as carefully as I can. In attending many public meetings, I've repeatedly been disappointed by the amount of misinformation and misunderstanding that's shown by some of our citizens. Some of it may be intentional, but I don't think that's the case for most. Most, I think, reflect insufficient time spent working on the vast amount of supporting Specifically, many of the concerns over managed retreat, over the use of peer review, and over the purpose of the comparative economic analysis, which we hear a lot about, those are examples that I feel very strong, but mistaken opinions are prevalent. Few of these objections, in fact, not just those, but many of the ones we hear, are actually new. And most of the comments are specifically and substantively addressed in the supporting materials provided to everyone by the city. It's not always easy. As I mentioned, the materials are vast, but the info to become informed is really there. And I compliment the city for keeping all that information there, bringing it to us. Some people have complained that the process hasn't been forthright or transparent. I guess I can only speak from my experience. From the beginning, I've had lots of comments, written comments, as a member of the working group, pages and pages of them, sorry. And then public comments where I stand up and say something in addition at a meeting. Lots of comments, written and oral, outright criticisms, and sometimes softer suggestions for improvements. Every one of these has been addressed specifically in the city's position, explained in the documentation which is available to the public. While it is certainly true, as was mentioned earlier, that there hasn't been a dialogue between the city and the council members, if you think about that, that type of point-by-point dialogue with individuals is not the way this is likely to work. It doesn't seem practical to me. So it's true that the dialogue has been limited. I can say that as I looked at the revolving materials that came out and were made available to us over time, I could see the changes occurring. And in many cases, I could see that the responses that occurred in the plan seemed to be responses to things that people had commented about. So there is real evidence that the city has been responsive and transparent in what it's been doing. As a number of people have said tonight, this work is not yet done, another reason to move forward. This is the next step, and I strongly encourage the council to move this process along and keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Menefee, and this is the last speaker card.
I am a member of the Sea Level Rise Community Work Group and a resident of Park Pacifica, 2.5 miles from the shoreline. I mention this distance in recognition that all Pacificans are stakeholders in this LCP process. I feel for the homeowners who live in the coastal zone. I am concerned about the continued viability of Pacifica's public infrastructure west of Highway 1. I am fearful of heaping the specter of managed retreat onto Pacifica's existing reputation as being hostile to development. Why did the city receive only one response to its RFQ for overdue development of primo beachfront property? How can we promote the historic Palmetto District as a destination location deserving of investment absent unequivocal assurances of city protection and preservation? I'm sure that we can all agree, we can agree that even for those of us who have been immersed in this process of updating the LCP, the voluminous documents are complicated and Byzantine. Despite the city's many outreach efforts, there is still a lot of confusion and ambiguity, as evidenced at the Planning Commission's meeting on November 19th and council's Q&amp;A with staff this evening. Attempts at clarification reveal yet more sources of confusion. To their credit, city staff have made multiple representations to the public that the draft policies under consideration do not include managed retreat. But as is obvious from the feedback, coastal residents and prospective business investors need more concrete reassurances. Let's face it, the city has a PR or perception problem. People are understandably frightened about their property values and rights. They are not irrational, misinformed, and disingenuous. With genuine thanks to the current council members and staff who have worked so hard to bring us to this point, I respectfully request that this matter go before the newly-elected council members for their consideration in 2019. Should this council decide to go forward, at the very least, I strongly advise that you add the proposed optional language to Hazard Policy 4, which would require an amendment to the LCP before managed retreat could be implemented as an adaptation strategy. Thank you.
Okay, that's the last speaker card that I have, and so I'll close public comment. Okay, I have a request for a break, and I'm feeling that too. So let's take a break now. We always say five minutes, but it turns into 10, so. Okay, we're back in session. We have all our council members up here.
We don't have the manager yet.
We'll have him shortly. So are there any questions or comments from the city council? Sue Vatalas.
I asked this question to the Coastal Commission rep at the last meeting, and she wasn't sure. But I asked how many cities have been approved by the Coastal Commission to have their LCPs with sea level rise included. She said maybe one, in the state of California.
Sea level rise or managed retreat? You said sea level rise.
I meant sea level rise. With sea level rise included, because there are local coastal With sea level rise included, because there are local coastal programs without sea level rise included. And I asked how many have been included with the sea level rise factor. Does anybody else really know the answer to that?
Yes, Charles Lester with ESA and the City. Last I checked, it's a nuanced answer. There's a handful, I'd say, of LCPs that address sea level rise, going back, you know, probably a decade or more, where there is a reference to the need to consider sea level rise in addressing erosion or setbacks, but nothing to the level of detail that's being considered tonight, probably. There are a number pending. Janine would be able to tell you more about that.
Yes, pending. I asked how many were approved, and that was basically the answer, that we would be one of two, possibly. Possibly San Francisco had theirs approved with sea level rise included, but no one else in the rest of the state. So that answered my question on that one. Hazard policy number 26 has zero to two feet of sea level rise. It says elevate development structures as necessary to mitigate flood damage. Elevate the houses, elevate the businesses. Can you imagine elevating businesses in the neighborhoods of Sharp Park and West Fairway Park to mitigate this? And that's at zero sea level rise. Who's going to elevate them? How is that going to take place? I mean, I just am saying, I don't understand that. I agree with some of the people who said that nobody knows about the decrease in property values, no one knows about insurance availability, or the lowered property tax due to the lowered property values that are going to definitely affect the city. A huge portion of our income is from property tax. If the values of the properties have gone down, what happens to our property tax income? I also think that the remodeling and reconstruction issues are not clear in this. There are so many things to me that are unclear, that it makes it really difficult. It's difficult for the public, it's difficult for us, and I realize that it's going to go to the coastal commission, and they're going to make changes, but I think we're not ready yet. Thanks.[775.25][775.25](APPLAUSE).
So I'd like a little clarification on hazard policy 26. So it says elevate development structures as necessary. Is that voluntary for individual property owners?
It is voluntary. I can say that if you happen to be in a floodplain, which is a FEMA floodplain, that we already elevate some structures, and it's just not necessarily what you might think in your mind as being on stilts, that some, for example, new commercial building at Lindemar Shopping Center is up, the pad is raised, and so you will see that the floor of the building is a little bit higher, it's on a raised pad, and it gets it out of the floodplain, but it's not on a stilt. It's just that the pad for the building is built up a little bit farther. So there's different degrees of, I think when people see, you know, raising structures, they may think of the stilts, but it's not necessarily that high.
To follow up, the example you used was a new structure.
Right. And so we do have some homes in the Lindemar, lower Lindemar area that are in the floodplain, and when they do do major improvements in addition, they do need to, the new portions of the structure do need to be floodproofed.
And how severe will that be? Will that be something like, you know, a raised pad, a higher foundation, or will it be more than that?
It wouldn't be very severe. So like, you know, in Lindemar, I think that you may not particularly notice it if you're just driving by and noticing that the house is up a foot or less.
Yeah, okay. And just to be clear, that's on the new part of the structure, not the existing part of the structure?
Correct.
So it's voluntary in the sense that it would be voluntary for a homeowner or a business to floodproof their building, their existing building, but it's maybe not voluntary in that new construction or remodeling might be required to elevate the structure somewhat.
Right. It's written in our floodplain management ordinance, and for the city to participate in, you know, FEMA program, we actually, we do have to implement this as part of our code so that we can flood protect homes that may be in the 100-year floodplain.
Uh-huh. And where are those floodplains roughly?
Oh, gosh.
You mentioned lower Lindemar.
There's one there for sure, and, you know, maybe James can help me out here.
The FEMA flood hazard maps govern the major drainages, so that would be lower San Pedro Creek and West Lindemar, and San James Creek that comes down into the golf course area, and also they have floodplains mapped for coastal flood source as well from wave run-up and overtopping. So the main drainages, I think what you're referring to in the river floodways are in the West Lindemar area and surrounding Sharp Park, but I don't know if the codes also apply in their flood zone for the coastal source.
So Tina, would any of Fairway Park be in the FEMA designated floodplain?
So the majority is not. Are those few lots, I'm looking at James, are there a few lots that are on the far west side in the floodplain?
Yeah, those homes are in future flooding projection hazard zone, so that would be, what we've used in our study is 2100, so that's looking at over five feet of sea level rise.
So they're probably not in the FEMA then?
So they're above the existing 100-year floodplain as delineated by FEMA.
They're above the floodplain as defined by FEMA at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So those homes, no homes in Fairway Park would be subject to this floodplain management ordinance that we use to satisfy FEMA?
Right.
Okay. And, yeah, I can't think of anywhere else that's a little, in the Clarendon area, maybe?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.[1134.58][1134.58](APPLAUSE). All right.[1136.58][1136.58](MUSIC)
I believe that they do have some flood impacts there on Clarendon, yes.
And they would be in the FEMA floodplain area?
I can check that, I don't want to speculate.
Okay, great. You can check that and get back to us. All right. That was all just a lengthy follow-up to one of Sue's questions. Sue, do you agree?
So trying to make, this is baluminous, and a lot of very, very, very hard work by our staff for sure, and the extra staffs, and the public, a lot of public input. So I was struck by the words "final draft," and puzzled, so how can you have a draft that's final? So I might prefer to hear that from city attorney or city planner, but I'm suggesting that we don't need to use the word "final" because we're in process. So do one of you want to talk about why the word "final" was used?
Sure. So throughout this process, we have encouraged public comment and have responded to public comment, and we wanted to, with our title, signal that this is the draft that we're going to take before the decision-makers, and it's not available for, we're not going to respond to comments at this point, so we used the word "final draft." It wasn't to, as you're aware, the process is that this will be, if we get direction tonight to incorporate these policies into the LCP, that LCP process continues a public engagement process, and there will be additional public meetings, including in front of planning commission and city council, to review the documents before they're adopted.
So for the purposes of tonight, we can take the word "final draft" and change it and take away the word "final" and say this is a draft document. Am I correct on that?
Correct. And I believe the way the motion is written, it does not include "final."
It doesn't.
Doesn't, okay. Well, that was a big stumbling block, it's like, why are we using the word "final?" So the process goes on, obviously, and nothing is, there's certainly not enough specificity in the majority of things, because there's no way that we could have that specificity at this point, and that's going to come with more interaction between the public and with professionals and staff. And so the other thing that I heard from the residents was, you know, our property values and insurance, because if you want to do something for your house, whatever way you choose to go, insurance is going to be a big deal. So I did reach out to the East Coast, and it's, what's the name of the company? It's Christopher Heidrick. It's got a lot of letters that I don't understand what they mean, but I guess they're important for insurance. It's a company insurance, a risk management services, and I chose to, rather than say erosion and all that sort of thing, I just figured that one of the most common issues that we're going to face for whatever, rain, sea level, creeks, will be flooding, and how bad flooding could be. So I simply asked, I don't have my question, but his answer will show you kind of what the question was. So his answer was, "Good morning, the South Florida coast is extremely risky for coastal flooding. The question," this was my question, "what do we need to know is far too broad for me to respond to, as the NFIP, which is National Flood Insurance Program, is extremely complex, and the answer to this question would depend on your specific property. Managed retreat language in city plans does not have a significant effect on the availability or affordability of flood insurance, but would be a prudent measure." So that was just a brief recent, because I thought I would choose to do an insurance company where they're well-known, have a good reputation, and they're in a zone where they have a lot of flood, and you know that in that area, so they have. So for that information, and I think the city should spend some time looking into information so that we have that kind of backup, and we're talking about in our documents, incentivizing, helping, being there to help our residents be incentivized to do whatever it is they need to do to stay, to be safe. And I also remember that very recently, when the fires happened, so many fires in this state, that all of a sudden residents were complaining that their insurance rates were, they were just either not being paid, or they were being gouged, and the state insurance commissioner stepped in within the last couple weeks, and has stepped in to make sure that insurance gouging is not going to happen. So that is a very huge, huge issue for people, and that would be a huge issue for our city as infrastructure is too, so. The other thing is, looking at this, you have, and I think part of, is an understanding that the coastal act already exists. The coastal act is not something that is them against us. That argument has already happened. This is a California state public people vote, and it can be changed by a California statewide public people vote, just like you have proposition 13, which was a public vote to protect homeowners in that way. The coastal act was a public vote to protect access to the ocean for the reasons for all public members, regardless of where you live, in the valley or wherever, that you would be able to escape from your place of work or living, to go to your California beaches and be able to just stay there and sit down in the sand, go to a restaurant, go to a library, whatever, with visitors serving, go swim, surf. So we have, as a city, we don't have a choice. We are a coastal city, so we have a stewardship to make sure that we abide by the public will of the state of California for access for all peoples, number one in our own state, because this is our coast. The other thing is that, okay, so that was one, so that's one kind of restraint, if you want to, not a restraint, but a consideration. I think the fact that the coastal commission has some issues about what we have, from what I got from them, and from the San Francisco Parks person was, that our document is, as I've already stated, is not at all specificity perfect, and that they're all eager and want to have a closer conversation and dialogue with us. I think we should put that as a priority for us, and within that priority of dialoguing with the city of San Francisco and the coastal commission, they seem to be very able, and we also have a great relationship with Caltrans, and that conversation should be going on, that we continue to have an even more robust interaction with our public. And our public has to include the people up by skyline as well, as back of Parkman said, because with the sea coming into our wastewater treatment outlets, which are right there, that's going to back up toilets and sinks all the way up the hill. We already know that. It's not happening now because we're not having that intrusion of the saltwater at this point. So that's another thing that, so in our outreach, I've never been one for stakeholders, I'm sorry, because to me, the stakeholders, once you get into those small groups of stakeholders, it gets lost in the larger community, and even though they're supposed to be representing you, in my personal opinion, even as well-intentioned everybody is, if it's not you sitting there, interacting and talking and hearing, then I don't think it's as rich as it really needs to be. And those who know me for a long time know I'm always harping about public forums, where you get to sit with each other and chat and disagree and work things out, rather than only three minutes at the podium, or as a stakeholder small group. So those would be some of my things. I don't see this, I don't see this as a very specific program right now. It has a lot to go. So for those who are worried about the next council, the next council's going to have a lot of hard work, very, very hard work of being at meetings, listening, and listening to you, and listening to, like I said, the coastal commission, San Francisco, and even our county. So why would I allow in my mind to rush a little bit by moving forward, understanding we took the word "final" out of this? This is a draft, moving forward, because as I mentioned before, when I first became a councilperson in 2002, they sent us to the FEMA school in Maryland, and FEMA drummed it into us, "If you want to get our money," your money, "if you want it and you need it, and you want it when you need it, you have a plan ready. It's not going to be a perfect plan, because you don't know when that catastrophe or what that catastrophe is going to be, but you need some semblance of proof to us that you are ready. You can tweak it to match the catastrophe of the moment, but you're ready, it gets in our hands, it passes our inspection, and you get the money." We are competing with California coast, Oregon coast, the coast period. We are competing with Florida. We are competing with the East Coast. We need to, we are competing with our Bay Area, that side of the Bay, and-- our Bay Area, that side of the bay. And that worries me the most. So even though the specificity of everything here is open for dialogue, all we're asking to go is with the baseline we have sketched together now, based on experts and public input, that we take that baseline that we have now, that's workable by you and professionals and the next council, and get going, and have that plan ready. So it won't be just FEMA money, but grant monies, and that they're ready. So those would be my suggestions. And there were three other things that were recommended that we also consider, so council would look at this. And this, again, is specificity. This doesn't have to be tonight, because that's a more specific thing. Rockaway can talk about this. Sand replacement at Rockaway, coastal retention structures that we've talked before at different meetings, offshore reefs, headlands. I think that's really more specificity that we don't need to get into, but seawall mitigation fees. Funding is definitely an issue that we need to address. So I might think of a few other things I wrote down, but those are kind of what they are.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Mike O'Neill.
Okay. One of the things I keep noticing is, it's, right now, we have a 35-foot height limit in the local, in the coastal region, correct?
For the entire city.
Yeah, for the entire city. If the building is going to be raised for sea level rise, are we going to mitigate that by raising that to 40 in certain cases or whatever?
I think that if we ever got to that point, that we could either change the zoning, or we could, you know, seems like a good case for a variance.
Okay. So we would be able to do that. Is, and a question, I don't know whether this would be City Manager, ESA, or who, is the cost-benefit analysis, is that going, is the findings in the cost-benefit analysis, or the economic analysis, is that going to be one of the determinations in getting funding? So if you're going to apply for a grant to get funding to protect something, are they going to look at that economic analysis to see if what you're applying for is worth protecting?
I'll begin and then turn it over to anybody from staff or the consultants that want to add. The purpose of the benefit-cost analysis as a supporting document to this is just to shed light on the relative cost of the different adaptation strategies. So it's not specific to any type of funding application that we might have, you know, I'll stop there and then open it up to anything that might be used that would be specific.
Well, I guess I would offer that in two situations. One, if, you know, a federal agency or another, perhaps a state funding source was considering whether to support a particular project, they might want to gather information about the costs and benefits of different options. And so this information would be available for that purpose. Whether or not that would influence their decision as to whether it's a good project to do, I think that would be driven primarily by other factors. And so under the Coastal Act, for example, if the Coastal Commission was considering an alternatives analysis for a seawall, for example, they would look at questions about whether it's the least environmentally damaging feasible alternative, which wouldn't necessarily relate to its cost, although the feasibility of some other alternative might be determined in part by how much that would cost to accomplish.
When I was looking at that, some of the loss of, and I was kind of looking at it for the loss of the property taxes to the city, it was, seemed like it was pretty, an estimate was pretty minimal as to the loss of taxes to the city in some of those scenarios. I mean, it was like $100,000 or, I don't, I can't find it or, I forgot to print that page, to be honest with you. But it just seemed to me that the economic analysis was very minimized the impact it would have to the city if we, if it wasn't protected or it was lost. Okay? And I'm kind of getting into the, then, can you share with us what would be the timeline, or what, if, let's say, this passes tonight, what is the next step and how it would work? And then if this was rejected tonight, what would be the next step and what would happen, and how it would work? The two, we're at a fork in the road. If you go down one fork, you go down the other fork, what's the, what's going to happen?
So I can maybe take a first stab at that. So if it's, if the staff recommendation is approved tonight, then we would move forward with bringing back the entire LCP with these policies incorporated to, and the general plan, for additional community outreach, and bringing it, re-familiarizing the Planning Commission and City Council with the documents, and eventually, hopefully, adoption later in 2019. If the council is not ready to accept staff's recommendation tonight, I think perhaps another question would be posed either this evening or at a future agenda, which would be, you know, what are our next steps? Do we need to do some revisions to what we have? Are we going to do minor revisions, a major revision with more community engagement? We kind of would need to talk about what the process would be in that case. So I don't have an answer for that.
And Councilmember O'Neill, I'll add a couple elements. One is that if the process continues to work on these policies, it will affect staff's resource, time, and availability to work on other major projects. Because as it's currently set, we are going to begin working on the rest of the LCP and the general plan update and all of other plannings priorities. And if we continue this process, it'll just delay progress on the rest of that. The other impact would be that it just delays the policy direction that we have from the City Council, for me, as well as the council members, to take and communicate and tell our story about those projects, those protective projects, seawalls, et cetera, that we want to start building and raising funds for. And if I don't have the direction from the council, I can't be communicating that to the agencies until I do have that direction.
So by communicating, are you saying you, and you have grant applications that need this document now to apply for?
We do have one grant application in for boating and waterways related to the feasibility study for the Beach Boulevard seawall. But the other steps that I envision taking are letters communicating to our legislatures, as well as legislators, as well as other regional, and the county-based water agency was mentioned, regional, state, as well as federal sources. And I'm working with Jackie Spears' office to bring representatives from the Army Corps back out to Pacifica. And if we have policies, that we have direction from council on these policies, we can begin telling that story about what this community wants for Pacifica. And if we delay that, I can't start that work until we do have that direction.
Some of the comments that have been made are like, almost kind of like an itch that just won't get, go away, okay? San Francisco's Park and Rec has consistently said that they were not happy with the analysis for non-beach recreation. And yet, and also the members of the public have said this has never been peer-reviewed. And I know somebody mentioned this, San Mateo Office of Sustainability used the same research that was used here, there, but it wasn't peer, the research at this point, to my knowledge, was not accepted by Corps of Engineers, or was not accepted by government agency or peer-reviewed. And I'm assuming it wasn't when they used it. So just because somebody used information doesn't mean it's good. I mean, the internet's full of stuff like that, because this website said this, or this website said this. So why weren't some of these constant comments and criticisms never addressed in the whole report? And that's probably more ESA, especially the issues with San Francisco Park and Rec, peer review?
Peer, what document or data are you talking about being peer-reviewed?
I think we're talking about the literal cell.
The Coastal Regional Sediment Management Plan.
Yeah. I don't believe that. Was that peer-reviewed at some point, or adopted by the Army Corps of Engineers or anything?
I don't think that the document has been finalized. No, I can't speak to its completion.
Right. So it was a draft, right, and never completed?
Right.
But it's part of our report, and it was also used by Sustainable San Mateo.
So I believe that our economist looked at the beach visitation data that was developed for the document you were speaking about, the Coastal Regional Sediment Management Plan. So I think he, our economist looked at the beach visitation data there. He also had a number of other beach visitation data sources that he looked at. And I think that another comment that was made connecting our study to the county was regarding the coastal flood maps that we used. And those coastal flood maps were developed by the U.S. Geological Survey for their COSMOS Coastal Hazards Modeling product that they produced. And so that's a publicly available data set that we relied on for our vulnerability assessment. That is the same data that the county used in their county-wide study.
So if I could clarify, because I think there's a couple issues that need clarification that are starting to overlap, and then maybe, you know, Bonnie and our consultants can continue the response. So first of all, on the peer review, my understanding of the comments that have been made are referencing a Coastal Commission recommendation that the basis for these vulnerability assessments and adaptation plans be peer-reviewed, best-available science. And my understanding is that the basis for our studies do go back to, you know, best-available, peer-reviewed science. I think it's being translated into that the vulnerability study in the adaptation plan has to be peer-reviewed, and that's not really what it's, what it's saying. That's my understanding. Again, I can, you know, have the consultants clarify that. Let's see, I think the other thing you mentioned was the Army Corps and the literal cell study. So when we did...
That that draft was never finalized.
Right.
So it is, was a draft, is a draft, but never accepted as a final document, just kind of like what Sue was saying.
Right, exactly. And so what I can say is that when I did the reference checks prior to making a recommendation to council to hire ESA, I did call the Army Corps and the individuals who are in charge of that study. They had said that they were happy with the work that ESA did, that they were not fired, the stage of their work was completed, and now they're on to another phase, and they just haven't completed that, so it's not adopted yet. That they were happy with the work that ESA did for the literal cell study. And I think, oh, and the itches on the cost for recreation, I do agree that we keep getting the comment. I think it's not because we're not responding, it's because perhaps the response isn't satisfactory to maybe Mr. Harris and to San Francisco. But Bonnie can explain what our economists did in response to those questions, and can explain a little bit about that. So I think those were the three things. So I'll go ahead and turn it over.
Yeah, I think one of your question was the comments about the beach value. Is that...
It's $40 a day, based in Southern California, yeah.
Right. So Dr. Phil Keen used a value of $40 a day for our beaches. And he got that number from a reference that he found and was supportive of. We heard comments from our community that that number was way too high for our Northern California beaches, and that it should be lowered. In response to that, he did an analysis that reduced that value to $10 a day.
How much, $10 a day?
Yeah, it was $10.
$10 a day.
Yeah.
And the results of doing that analysis didn't change the rankings of the, of the cost-benefit analysis for the different scenarios. And so it didn't really change the outcome of it, it just lowered the cost. So it's, based on that sensitivity analysis, lowering the cost did not change the outcome of the results.
And, let's see, and there has never been any research or anything in regards to the consequences of adopting some of the policies, correct? Some of these, the sea level policies, because like, one of the things here on Hazard Policy 45, there's a statement here, "And a waiver of any rights to such protection, and where necessary, require a removal and restoration plan, including bonding for large projects, to avoid future shoreline protection or project failure." Now, that's almost verbatim out of the Coastal Commission's residential guidelines. Okay? And I believe that they, when we met, I think Janine was there, that they had 88 responses in a state of 44 million people, is what we were told. And that they held off on having, moving forward with those because they wanted to review their public outreach, okay, and how effective it was. And why is something that this Coastal Commission itself said they didn't have enough public outreach on, why is that going in our hazard policy? And it's also here, Hazard Policy 46 is almost verbatim from the same thing, the Residential Hazard Building Guidelines. And that, okay, so why are we putting them in our hazard policies when the Coastal Commission itself has backed off on those pending a review of their public outreach?
Do you want to, or, why don't you start?
Well, I can speak to the role that I played in some of this language, which was to make a recommendation based on the best practices out there, which includes the current pending guidance from the Coastal Commission, and is really rooted in their first round of guidance from several years ago. So I think the city, in choosing to propose this language, is trying to anticipate what would be good policy on these particular questions.
You just said the current policies of, couldn't you just say, based on the current recommendations and policies of the Coastal Commission?
My assessment, yeah.
Your assessment of the current policies, right. But then you said it was from several years ago. But the current assessment they have is they're reassessing their philosophy. Do you think 88 responses, public comments, in a state of 44 million people is a good outreach and good feedback for public reaching out?
Well, that's an interesting question. That's a high number of responses, in my experience, to an issue in our state, you know.
How many responses did we get on our plan? I think we got quite a few, right?
If I can break in here on this issue. So Hazard Policy 45 talks about new development on vacant shoreline property.
And that was part of the residential building guidelines, right?
Yeah, yeah. But how many, how many instances of that do we have in Pacifica? I can think of one.
So...
It's right here, the beach, the hotel. And Policy 46, it says, "Development on the shoreline requires a deed restriction requiring the owner to identify and hold the city harmless." And I just fail to see how that's, that's an issue.
It's, we're adopting, okay, the scenario, you were there when Kevin, you and I met with the people from the Coastal Commission.
Right. Right.
And we were down there talking to them about the residential building guidelines. And when we met with them, they, their plans were to hold public meetings, Southern California, public meetings. That was October, November, Northern California, December adoption. And then they pulled it back to decide to do early two thousand nineteen because of the lack of response and the, and I guess we made a case or whatever, and they pulled back. But what I'm questioning is, is if these were items that were already, the coastal commission pulled back on these items, why are we putting them in our coastal plan, our residential guidelines here, our documents?
And, you know, I don't want to put words in staff's mouth or in the consultant's mouth. But I would, my opinion would be, the reason why we're putting these in here is because they make good sense for us.
And if I could add that having, this is, first, let me clarify where this would apply. So this would be on a shoreline where it was currently vacant, so it would be completely nude, nude development for sure. And it would need to be designed to be safe for at least a hundred years without protection. That is already in our LCP.
Okay.
So that part of the reason why this wasn't objectionable to staff is in our old nineteen eighty LCP already has similar language that new development is not entitled to, should be cited so that it does not need a shoreline protective device for a hundred years.
Okay, okay, well then let's look at hazard policy fifty-one, "Protection of private property in hazardous areas." Okay, including, okay, that basically, this to me looks like the lawyer's dream job, okay? That hazard avoidance measures would preclude a reasonable economic use of the property as a whole. And who determines the reasonable economic use of the property? Okay, I mean, I just see litigation all over that. And the problem I have with that is the fact that we're writing the check. The city would be writing the check. If you go to court, one, just the legal fees, the court costs and everything, the experts hauled in and everything, but then, two, paying, who's determining what's the reasonable economic use? And this seems to me that this is, you know, and it says right here, there's no, to be sure, there's no taking that needs to be avoided if the proposed development constitutes nuisance, no, wait, I'm reading the wrong part, "to avoid an unconstitutional taking of private property without just compensation." I mean, this just looks like the lawyer's dream that we would just be in litigation after litigation with that. How would that be, how would the economic-
If I could, if I could just address that issue, and actually, this language is specifically put in there to protect the city, to give the city more discretion, to allow approval of development if, in fact, there are claims that there's a takings and the council decides after consultation with their legal counsel that to not approve a particular development would create a taking. So it's not, it's to prevent litigation. That is the only reason that language is put in there. And it's to give the council more discretion in terms of providing exceptions to where applying these policies in a strict or conservative fashion would, in fact, create a taking and it would allow the council an opportunity to avoid litigation.
Okay, "Including for setbacks and other hazard avoidance measures would preclude a reasonable economic use of the property as a whole. The city may allow the minimum economic use and/or development of the property necessary." Who determines the minimum economic use of a piece of property?
The whole reason, the city would. The city would determine that. But the reason the city would even be considering that is to allow an exception from the existing policies to allow development.
So to allow minimum economic use, the city of Pacifica, Mike O'Neill on the council says, you're going to be allowed the minimum economic use of your property?
That is not how it would work. It would work where the application of these other policies would prevent development. And the council has determined after consultation with their legal counsel that if you apply these policies strictly, you have the potential of creating a possible unconstitutional taking. So we need an exception. That's what this policy is. It's an exception that gives the council the discretion to determine whether or not development, despite the existing policies, should be allowed.
So this is basically, just to be sure I understand it correctly. They've put in their application, they've gone through the planning process, whether administratively or to the planning commission, and they've issued their determination and then comes to the city council on appeal, basically. And the city will say, okay, you can do C-two instead of C-three.
Correct. And you would be able to use this policy to say, well, if we didn't allow this development, then there's the potential that it could create a taking. We don't want to do that. We want to avoid litigation. Therefore, we're using this policy as an exception.
Okay, that's me for now.
Okay, Deirdre Martin.
So there are some questions that I wanted to see if we can get answered. Gordon mentioned monitoring as a part of this. I think policy number five addresses Lisa's concern that additional monitoring be in place under the new policies.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then there was a request for some clarification of new development.
Excuse me, he also mentioned the possibility of a full-time position to do that monitoring.
Yeah, I know, he did. That's not really, I mean, the suggestion probably noted in the minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, thanks, John. And you can feel free to jump in if there's anything I missed. And then there was a request for clarification on new development. We did go over this, but can you just give your best description of the word new development?
So new development is where you currently have a vacant site and there's nothing on it. And then you're going to build something brand new.
Okay, okay. And then can you also give your best definition of the word development?
Development is very broadly defined in the coastal act. And our current LCP and municipal code uses that very broad definition. And so it could be anything from what you might typically think of, like building a house or a garage, to a grading more than fifty cubic yards.
Okay, thanks. And then there was a question, and if the answer is, I don't know, that's the answer. But it was a question from Suzanne, asking about any third-party vendors, any lending institutions. Is there any information on discussions or will there be any plans to do this in two thousand nineteen so we can maybe get another, maybe a fourth scenario in there?
Yeah, so we, you know, we can't speak for the lending institutions. And what we are, what we can say is that we used data in our study that is readily available to anybody else who is looking, so an insurer or a lender. And we are hoping that having these policies in place will be helpful so that, you know, somebody who may be looking to, say, lend on a mortgage notices that you're near the coastline and they want to know, you know, what is your community doing regarding sea level rise, since it is a national topic.
Okay, can, wait, can we go backwards to the redevelopment? Because this site in particular would be a redevelopment, because there is an existing structure here. How do we define that?
We didn't define it.
You didn't?
We didn't, right.
Okay. Because development is development.
Right.
Okay.
Not really.
We're saying there's two definitions. One's new development and the other one is development. The term development is broadly defined in the coastal act. New development we've defined here tonight.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
And just to be clear, this site, you know, in the future, if it does come to pass that we have a hotel here, that would be new development. Am I right?
It's just development, right?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I got, let me see, I have a couple of questions here. This is regarding revision A.
Maybe one day.
So can you just explain again what revision A means? So I'm just reading right from the report here. Revision A provides clarification to address the public's concern that adaptation strategies analyzed in the adaptation plan, but not expressed in the sea level rise policies, may later be incorporated into the policies without public input. That's what came out of the planning commission's discussion. And the, and it says that this revision does not change the implementation of the policy and only provides clarification. So then revision A was created, correct?
Yeah, so we drafted this language and inserted it here just specifically to address the public's concern that somehow the policies would be changed without public input. So we wanted to make that very clear that it wouldn't.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that again out loud, that there is a current concern that the, that anybody, we can make a change to any of these policies without the public's input. That's not the case. So this revision A addresses that. Thanks to the planning commission for bringing that forth. And thanks to staff for acknowledging that and putting that in here. Now, given that, I want to play out another scenario. So new council comes on and they want to revisit one of the policies, right? What happens in that scenario? We have a, how will we engage the public on that? And does that put our LCP at risk?
So in your scenario, are we in two thousand nineteen and we're past that? It's adopted?
Yes.
Okay, if it's adopted and the council has given staff direction to do a legislative amendment to one of our documents, including the LCP, then we would go through, the process is a public hearing at minimum, this is a minimum process. Minimum would be a public hearing for recommendation in front of the planning commission. And so that would be noticed to the public and have time for public comment. And then recommendation to the city council, so there would be two public hearings. If it's a significant change, the council may also direct more community engagement and public meetings before we even get to planning commission.
Okay, so in your opinion, in that scenario, does that put our LCP at risk for grant funding? Like, we haven't adopted, but we're revisiting this one area. And do we still have a completed LCP if we're going through a legislative amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
The documents are amended for a variety of reasons.
So that should make some people feel better. I just want people to know that. I'm trying to play out some good scenarios for two thousand nineteen because, as Councilmember DeGree said, this is a draft. So thank you for that clarification. Any questions on that?
Actually, could I just clarify this issue for the record?
Yep.
So any motion or action that the council's taking tonight is not going to create a final LCP with related to these policies. That is not happening tonight. The new council is going to have an opportunity to actually adopt these final policies at some point during two thousand nineteen, when the council does adopt the local, its local coastal plan.
Okay, so in two thousand nineteen, we wouldn't need to go through in a legislative amendment. We would just need to pull it back to discuss.
Well, the new council is going to have an opportunity to review all of these policies again. Because this is not the final adoption of the LCP.
Understood.
Staff is just asking direction as to whether or not the council wants staff to move forward with these policies as crafted today, but policies which, you know, may likely change in two thousand nineteen, either because, you know, staff has additional revisions or because the new council has their own revisions to make.
Right.
What I wanted to clarify is this is not a final document.
Roger that. So, okay, that's great. But if we were to, you know, approve tonight, it's at least a good start. I mean, it's a very wonderful start to be able to start socializing with our legislators and things like that. Okay, but we're still able to make revisions to it. So again, feel a little bit better. Okay.
Councilmember Martin, I just want to add on there that, in addition, it's not, because we have a lot of work to do on the rest of the LCP and the general plan, it's not our intention that staff is going to continue to be working actively on revising these policies. But as we get closer to packaging it all together in the final LCP, in the draft LCP to bring back to the planning commission and council, that's when that will be revisited.
Okay, got it. It just sounds to me a little bit like we're, I know it's not the city's intention, but we probably are going to be doing a little bit of that, especially given the coastal commission's input, you know, over the past few months and their willingness to want to work with us and our willingness to want to work with them, in addition to San Francisco wrecked parks. So, I mean, we're, it's probably going to come back up. Just, okay, and then, do we have a, do we have a number of how many homes are in the hazard zone?
How many what?
Homes are in the hazard zone?
I don't have that figure, no.
Is it in the hundreds? Is it in the tens?
It's, I don't have a number. We have a map that people can look at and, but-
Yeah, I can't speak to a specific number offhand, but it tends to hundreds of homes, depending on the hazard zone you're talking about erosion or flooding and depending on what scenario of sea level rise. But yeah, we've made all the maps that we used available to look at on the web mapper.
Okay, that makes sense, depending on where you are, depending on your geography. And I'm just going to make a wild comparison here, so bear with me. When I'm on the emergency preparedness commission liaison and when we were trying to engage the city on, you know, all these wildfires that were going on, we wanted an evacuation plan, we wanted an evacuation plan, and not like this, but we were trying to say, we need one. But there is no one evacuation plan. It's different for every scenario. It's different for every geography. So it's, it's sort of the same, but different, but sort of the same. It's not, it's different geography, different areas. So I get it and I get that it's ambiguous too, so.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin, I will just add that in the vulnerability assessment, we do have a parcel count for the number of parcels in the vulnerability assessment. It's not necessarily homes, but-
And what is that?
It's per subarea.
Oh, okay, so they're all listed out.
Citywide, but-
Okay, thanks. I won't, I won't pull that up now. But, okay, so it sounds like there's going to be some buzz around what constitutes new development. And we did, we did get clarification on that tonight, but that might be something we're probably going to revisit maybe next year. And I heard hit on that. So what are we going to be doing in two thousand nineteen? And this is a question that I, that I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on. And I'm going to answer it and then I'm going to ask city staff to correct me. So in two thousand nineteen, we are going to engage a consultant to restart our general plan. And the LCP is part of that process, okay? So the sea level rise is just a part of the LCP, which is a part of the general plan, okay? And then some of that general plan has to deal with specific areas. We're looking at Sharp Park, a Sharp Park-specific area. So that's another thing we're going to be looking at in two thousand nineteen, just as part of this general plan. And that's, and that's why we have a little bit more time. The other reason why we have a little bit more time is because the coastal commission granted us more time. We're also going to be looking at public access and recreation as it relates to our general plan. And then our environment, scenic resources, species habitat, creeks, wetland preservation, and then an education. So I think that's what we're going to be doing in two thousand nineteen to get to December thirty-first approval. Did I cover everything?
Yes, that was a good summary. That was a good summary.
Okay.
So I would say one thing is that it seems to me, and again, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that the LCP is not part of the general plan. The LCP is a plan by itself that will be approved by the coastal commission and that will happen first. And the general plan will come later. And, you know, the part of it that is not in the coastal zone needs no approval from the coastal commission. And the part that is in the coastal zone is the LCP.
So I think you're both right. So they need to be consistent. And so they are bundled in separate documents. But, you know, the general plan isn't going to say something different in the coastal zone from the LCP. And they're going to be prepared concurrently. But then it's also accurate that the coastal commission's only reviewing that LCP part of that bundle.
Okay, and so the reason, so my connection to the general plan was sort of the Sharp Park-specific area, the Palmetto re-ubification and how that's in the coastal zone. And so anything that we would be doing there would need to be reflected in the general plan.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so. Okay, so it seems to me that it's unfortunate, but the word managed retreat has divided our community. And also unfortunately, I think the mere mention of the word managed retreat for many feel that their homes have already been devalued. And for that, I'm sorry. And whether it's true or not, it has happened. And it's not just happened in Pacifica. It's happened everywhere. So unfortunately, that's sort of black and white for some people. And, but mentioning the word managed retreat and analyzing it is only making us smarter as a community. And some of you have already heard this, but it's worth mentioning again. My folks live in New Jersey and they live nine feet above sea level. I actually think they live at sea level, but it's technically nine feet. Their home was destroyed in Superstorm Sandy and they were allowed to rebuild 13 feet above sea level and take out a 30-year mortgage. And at high tide, on a full moon, they can canoe down their streets. And that's not sewer water, that's ocean water. So the reason I tell you that is because I don't think New Jersey is as hip to sea level rise as we are. They did start replenishing their dunes. And when I went back last year, they had built up their dunes and they had done some beach nourishment there, which was nice. But the point is, is that somebody had mentioned, you know, insurance companies and we're, it's not just going to be in the flood zone, it's going to be our fires too. So it's going to be everything. And the other thing was, my mother's flood insurance went up about $1,000. So that's also just information for you. The last thing I want to say is thank you to the community, the working groups. I know a couple of people have mentioned that they weren't really thrilled with, there was no sort of dialogue like this. And I may have wanted to change that too. But a postmortem might be good. And Gordon said he was willing to be a part of that. And I want to thank Bonnie and Tina and Kevin and city manager and Sarah. And I think that I want to thank the public for being dedicated and coming out and speaking and being engaged and getting your neighbors engaged. And even thank, you know, Sam Carr for getting people out here too, believe it or not. I think we have a good plan here. And I think it's a good place to start and I think it still needs work. But we all know that. So let's just get working. I did want to mention one more thing. And I mentioned it last time, which was, if we don't have a plan and we don't approve something tonight so we can start socializing, there are grants that we will not be able to apply for and we will be last in line. And one of those grants is coming up. There's about $37 million up for grabs. And that's for pre-disaster mitigation. And we can submit up to nine sub-applications. And if we don't have anything to reference, if we're not shovel-ready, we can't check that box that says, "Do you have a plan?", we're not going to be first in line for those monies. So I would recommend moving forward with this this evening and then also relying on the incoming council to have, you know, come to the table with some good understanding of what we need to do and the work that needs to be done. That's it.
Thank you, Deirdre. Mike O'Neill, you've got your light on.
Actually, it kind of happened. I just wanted to, just for the public, I wanted to have Tina go over what was the general plan, the relationships, general plan and local, you know what I mean?
Yep.
But Deirdre kind of mentioned it, so.
Okay. So I want to go through one more time. Remodeling on the shoreline and in the hazard zone. And those may be two separate things, but... So can you walk me through that?
Remodeling?
Yeah. Yeah, remodeling a home.
So there's specific policies that we're recommending that are on the shoreline for properties that are on the shoreline. And that, we had heard that folks were confused about where that was. So we added a definition for your consideration, which would say, you know, intersection of land and sea.
So shoreline means on the shore?
On the shore.
Not across the street from the shore?
Not a block down, but on the shore.
Yeah, on the shore, okay.
And so if you were on the shore and you were going to maintain, do home maintenance, so replacing your roof, changing out your gutters, painting, et cetera, there would be no change for you. If you were going to do an addition, we would ask that you provide geotechnical and other analysis to ensure that where you were adding on to your home was safe. And it would consider any existing shoreline protection and its expected lifespan and how it's being maintained, et cetera. And if you had no shore protection, you know, it would consider that as well. And so we would ensure that any home addition, expansion would continue to be safe. I'll just add that that's not unlike a geotechnical report anywhere else in town, particularly on slopes.
Yeah, steep slope or something like that, right.
Right, and if you are...
Something that ensures that it's all not going to slide away or whatever, yeah.
Right, and if you are not on the shoreline, you know, these policies would not hinder your ability to, or require special studies, I should say, for an expansion or remodel of your home.
Okay, and so for people that are, so if you're not on the shoreline, no special studies. So that basically says there's nothing additional over our normal permits.
Right, what would otherwise be required of the building code?
Okay, but if you are on the shoreline, you have to do this geotech analysis. And, you know, one thing I would, I try to emphasize to anybody that's looking at Pacifica is that most, I mean, you know, 80 or 90% of the residences and businesses that are on the shoreline are already armored. And so we went through this before in this meeting that for places that already have armoring, they get to expand that by up to 50%. And that's okay with geotech analysis and so on. Any more than that and it constitutes a new shoreline protection device, I think. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to, and... So other than that, other than the shoreline protection and the geotech analysis to ensure that the addition will be safe, are there any other restrictions above and beyond what you would normally impose on any residential building?
None.
Or an addition?
No.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes.
This might seem like a dumb question, but I just want to ask it to be sure. What is the definition of shoreline? Because in a lot of the issues they mentioned seem to say, "The beach shall be maintained at this width", or whatever, which would mean the shoreline moves. And, you know, given what some of the estimates seem to have been out there of erosion, the shoreline could be moving. And so could a guy, you know, wants to remodel his house on Francisco, you know what I mean? That's carrying it to the ultimate. But is there a definition of shoreline?
So that is one of the items that we recommended that the council consider including. So on packet page 122 of the staff report, we were proposing to clarify that shoreline means the intersection of the ocean and the sea with the land.
Well, it's also revision.
The ocean, so it doesn't say... There's nothing there in terms of plus five feet or... You know what I mean is, as you're saying, because there was one person that bought a piece of property and they want, and according to what this individual told me, and I mean, we both know who we're talking about, the coastal commission said you have to move that property back 75 feet because of possible erosion. Or whatever. So that was virtually 50% of the lot, so...
This definition would only be used to determine if the shoreline adjacent policies apply to your lot. It's, the instance that you are speaking of came out of an analysis that the coastal commission was asking that applicant to do.
Okay.
So I would think they're completely different scenarios.
Okay, so this is one of the things you're asking us to adopt here?
One of the suggestions, just to make things more clear.
One of the revisions, right? There's four of them, five of them, sorry. Okay, Suvaros.
This is a question that probably can't be answered, but the residential adaptation guidelines that the coastal commission is working on and has put off, how are those guidelines going to affect our local coastal plan? They're called guidelines, but often it's been determined that they became policy for the coastal commission, not necessarily for us, but for the coastal commission. Their guidelines are not always guidelines. Do we have any idea how that's going to affect our local coastal plan?
So you're right, I can't speak for the coastal commission. I can only take them at their word and what they put into their document. And the current draft states that they're guidelines and they're not mandates. And that's what they've published so far.
Okay, because some of the public comments really related to the draft adaptation guidelines, not our LCP.
Right.
Like the percentage of increase of maintenance from 1977 when the Coastal Act was developed.
Deirdre Martin?
So I received a correction on my statement about how much insurance my parents are paying. And I got it backwards. So there, because they raised their home, their insurance went from $2,500 a year to $375 a year. Anyone who didn't raise their homes after Hurricane Sandy's, flood insurance has gone up every year. And they actually had applied for grant, got grant money from FEMA for those folks to raise their homes. So all of her neighbors are now raising their homes on FEMA money. And this is exactly the kind of grants that we would be able to apply for. I mean, I'm not saying that we're going to raise homes, but I know it's something that we should think about. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? I think we've plumbed the depths of it.
Or the heights.
Or the heights, yeah, right. As much as we're going to do tonight, anyway. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, let her make a motion first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
To give direction to move forward with incorporating the attached sea level rise adaptation policies into the revised local, draft local coastal plan.
Including the revisions as reflected in the staff report.
Including revisions as reflected in staff report?
Second.
So do we need to attach each recommended action separately?
No.
Okay.
You're referring to the staff report.
Okay. Continue to seek and research funding opportunities from regional, state, federal legislators and other organizations related to sea level rise. Conduct community engagement on other aspects of the local, of the draft local coastal plan and place consideration of adoption of the full draft local coastal plan on a future agenda.
Second.
And seconded by Suvaros. Okay, please vote. And that passes three to two.
Motion to adjourn.
In honor of...
In honor of Gary Stoffen.
Kind of makes a motion to adjourn.
Mary Keener, I'd like to remind you that we'd like to adjourn.
Yeah, I know, I know. So I move that we adjourn from this meeting, six o'clock, which started at six o'clock on...
Seven o'clock. We're adjourning this regular meeting to a special meeting.
This meeting started at six o'clock.
We're adjourning the regular meeting to seven o'clock on December 17.
Right. So I don't have to mention what time this meeting started.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're adjourning this meeting, which started at six o'clock on December 10, 2018, to the regular meeting, which will start at seven o'clock on Monday, December 17, 2018, right?
Right here at these council chambers.
At council chambers, 2100 Beach Boulevard.
In honor of...
In honor of Gary Stoffen.
And we should get a vote?
Yes, we will get a vote. And we have to get a second first. Okay, we've got a second. Please vote.
I can't find it.
And that passes five to zero.
It's only 10 o'clock.
It's only 10 o'clock.
Gary was a nice guy.
Oh, yeah.
Very nice guy.